Councilman Abdelaziz? No, no, Councilwoman Cotton is here. I'm sorry, Councilwoman. We have a person also doing a presentation. I was just made aware that he's only available until 7:15. So we have to start this meeting. We'll schedule for 6:30, it's almost 6:50. What's that? Oh, no, I'm glad you're here. I'm happy to see you. I just wanted you to take the chair, you know, so we can start the meeting. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Patterson Municipal... Are we ready, Mr. Ming? Thank you. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Patterson Municipal Council, I welcome you to the workshop session of this municipal council. The meeting is now called to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Council President. Roll call for workshop session of Tuesday, April 6, 2021 at 6:30 p.m. Councilman Abdelaziz.
President.
Councilwoman Cotton. Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Jackson. Councilman Colleague. Councilman Mendez.
Good evening, President, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Mims.
Here.
Councilman Velez. Mr. President.
Here. Madam Clerk, will you please read the statement of compliance?
Yes, Council President. Statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Law. Meeting date is April 6, 2021. Adequate notice of this meeting was compiled and disseminated in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law in the following manner. The annual notice of regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council was compiled for the year 2020 to 2021 on or about July 1, 2020. Two, a schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2020 through 2021 was duly transmitted on or about July 1, 2020 to the North Jersey Herald News, the Record, the Arabic Voice, the Italian Voice, the Persei County Pulse, Dominicanan News, the Casqueia Internacional, El Especial, the Patterson Press, the City Post News, Tap into Patterson, in addition to any other publication duly requesting such notices. Three, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2020 through 2021 was prominently posted in the lobby of City Hall, first floor, in the place reserved for the announcements of this type. Four, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2020 through 2021 was duly filed with the municipal clerk. And five, a copy of the schedule of regular meetings of the municipal council was mailed to any person who requested and paid for the fee authorized by the Open Public Records Act.
So, Madam Clerk, normally we do the payment of bills first, but at this time, we have a consultant representing the garbage collection company. And they've been waiting since 6:30, where the meeting was supposed to start. And I was made aware they could only be at the meeting until 7:15.
Okay.
So they allotted 45 minutes for us. We have 25 minutes to have a discussion with them. And we're going to entertain item number 21.
Okay, Council President.
In the meantime, let me also just make everyone aware that Councilman Colleague is not going to be present tonight. He has a family engagement. So at this time, we'll do item 21. So Manny, Mr. Ojeda, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President, Council members.
Can you raise... Oh, you have the mic with the phone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Here with me is, I'm going to introduce Wayne DeFeo. He's a consultant for the solid waste collections for the city of Patterson. We just brought him here because we had him two weeks ago in the Council DPW Committee. And we just brought him just in case the council had any questions or if Councilman, the Chair wants to add anything to it. Councilman Mendez, Wayne DeFeo is here. Wayne, you're on to have any questions.
Okay, very good. Well, Council members, committee members, if you have any questions, go ahead and give me those questions. If I can't hear you, I may ask for the question to be repeated.
Is that the best we could do, Ryan, or... Is Mr. Ming able to raise the volume on that mic or no? Go ahead, Mr. DeFeo.
A lot of background noise.
That's better.
Much better.
And, Council President, I think if I could just ask Mr. DeFeo to do something similar to what he did at the committee meeting and just kind of give us a state of play for this waste management contract, where we are this year, what the options are, and what his suggestion would be for the city.
If I heard that correctly, your question was, what's the impact on the price for the renewal versus going out to bid? Something we talked about in the committee meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so in brief, and hopefully everyone can hear me well, as noted in prior correspondence, one of the points I would make is that what you have here is a situation where you have a known price today, which you are currently under on an extension. The extension is based on a 3% increase over the past contract price, meaning the last year. Now, your extension ends in three months, but the simple fact is that if you go out to bid, in all likelihood, you will see a higher increase than 3%. However, of course, no one can predict with certainty of that. There are some companies coming into the market that may change the pricing structure. But overall, throughout the industry, collection costs are up. They're up for three reasons. One is that you have a five-year window between the last time you went to bid and now. Roughly, prices go up. Two, we've had a bad year in the pandemic, and everyone's labor costs have increased, as well as certain other costs with medical. And three, there's been a shift in the competitive nature of the industry, in part because your city is large. It doesn't have a huge universe of contractors who can service it in the area. And that limits the available competition. Now, you have had as many as two bids and three bids and four in the past, but one of those companies, two of those companies that have bid in the past have since gone out of business, were retrenched. One chose not to bid last time because their pricing structure was so high in the first bid prior. And there are a couple of new players coming in to the market who may choose to bid on a contract like this. There are three things that make Patterson attractive. One is, of course, the very size of the city. This is a big contract. This will keep a fleet of 10 trucks, up to 30 people on your payroll, employed for up to five years. That's very attractive to companies so long as the margins are correct. Right now, what is happening in the industry is the industry has retrenched a little bit, as well as expanded. The low-price players, the low-price operators, have effectively faded away. They've gone out of business. That leaves...
So Manny, did you speak to him already about this? So worst-case scenario, if we can't get in touch, just give us an overview of what he recommended and what's the recommendation from the administration.
Okay. The overview is that...
You want to bring up the mic?
The overview is, after we had a discussion at the DPW committee meetings, they're looking at a 10% to 19% increase in the contract if we go out to bid right now. Not saying that that's not going to happen a year from now, but if we extend it for the three months and we go out to bid, that's what he's saying, that that's what we're going to be looking at. If we take the year, which that's only, there's only a year left in the contract, if we take that year, then we'll be preparing ourselves, obviously, within that year, to go out to bid and see what happens down the road. The prices might go back to the norm, or they might not. But if we do it now, under all the constraints and stuff like that that's out there in the market, we're looking at, instead of the 3% for that one year, you're looking at between 10% to 19% increase on the overall contract. From our professional...
So you guys, the administration's recommending that we just renew the contract? I know the council was, you know, we expressed ourselves, we're not too happy with some of the things that is happening with the collection of, you know, this company, the way they're handling themselves. What are we going to put in place in the meantime to make sure that we're monitoring them? And also, some of my colleagues, the Council Mendez, you know, the DPW Chair, is correct, and we said this last meeting, that we should do an analysis to see if it's feasible for us to bring it back in-house. Because the trend is that the cost is going to continue to go up. This is what you just stated, right? Based on the trend, the cost of collection is going to continue to go up. What is the current contracted amount for the year, Mr. Ojeda?
The current contract right now? Off the top of my head, I believe, and maybe they could correct me, I believe it's about $4 million now.
4.3.
For the year, so it's going to continue to increase by 10, 20%.
Your contract's 4.... Well, your new contract would be 4.494 million. 4.4 million, say 4.5, we'll round it off, which is a 3% increase from the current year, from the prior year, sorry. So the year-five extension went up 3%, which brings it to 4,494,000.
So basically, we go out to bid. All we're doing is, we probably get the same company, and all we're getting is an increase. We actually pay more just by getting the same company. That's basically what you're telling us.
Well, you may get the incumbent at a higher price. You may get the incumbent at a lower price, depending on where the competition comes in. The one thing about a solid waste bid that is beneficial to you is the fact that the bid has a 60-day window. Unlike most other bidding, where you can bid on 10 days, 15 days, or even 20 days, usually 10 days, a solid waste collection contract must be bid with 60 days. That gives a lot of time for prospective bidders to pick up the specs and analyze the specs and determine if they want to participate. With your specs, you know, we're striving for a little more simplicity. We've done that over the years, made it easier for contractors to bid. The question really comes down to who has available vehicles at the time, because right now, the biggest thing that is hurting some companies if they try to expand is simply there's a one-to-one-and-a-half-year backlog on getting solid waste collection vehicles. They're just not out there. The manufacturers are all running at 100%, but can't meet the demand right now for solid waste collection vehicles. So they have to have the vehicles available or have access to them on a lease basis, any of which is possible. That's a simple fact. But the other element of this is to bear in mind that you have, I believe, and Mr. Salavio can verify this, I believe you have a 90-day extension or 120-day extension. I'm not sure what that number is off the top of my head. I want to say, I don't know if he's there.
Thank you. No, no, Mr. Salavio's not...
The limited extension until October 31st.
All right. So, Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Councilman.
So you can't, you really have not much choice.
Mister, yeah.
Because after October 31st, that's expired.
Hold on one second, Wayne. The Councilman has another question. Hold on one minute.
I'm sorry.
So my question is, based on the numbers that was quoted, the 4.2, 4.4... 4.2, 4.4 million dollars, what has been the average in the last several years for the cost of the solid waste removal?
I couldn't hear that. Director, can you repeat that or at least paraphrase it for me?
What has been the average cost over the last several years for the cost for solid waste removal, for the dumping?
You heard that, Wayne? The question is, what has been the average cost or how much it's cost in the last three years the city has paid out as far as the solid waste collection?
How much have you paid over the last three years?
Yes.
Well, last year, it doesn't matter. Whatever you have...
What the value of the last three years of the contract was? Is that the question?
How much has the city been paying the bill for solid waste removal?
I have a hard time hearing, I'm very sorry.
You said, how much has the city's been paying for the bill for the solid waste in the last, the average in the last three years?
Okay, that would run, at this point, you're running about three and a half, between three and a half and four million. I'd say about 3.7 million. I don't have the number right in front of me on that right now. But that, based on the current contract, it's between three and four million. I will point out to you, you're actually not paying much more than you were paying seven years ago. You guys have been fairly flat overall.
I beg to differ.
Waste collection, you've been pretty lucky. Let me put it to you that way.
I beg to differ. There was one year we paid $12 million in total, with the two. So that was a solid waste...
You're counting disposal. I'm not putting disposal in the numbers.
Solid waste removal and the service. So what we're not accounting for when we talk about this is the amount of solid waste removal that the city's paying for that's encompassing illegal dumping. When drivers are taking $20 and picking up construction debris, when they're picking up certain items that they should not be picking up, the city's covering that bill. So we definitely have to look at the common practices with the company because everyone knows, if you give the driver $4 or $5, $20, they'll take anything from you. Not only that, but we're also not, we're taking all of the garbage together, so we're paying a different rate for things that should be sent to a different site. The things that should be sent, should not be sent to waste management right here, and it should be sent over to Covanta, which has an extremely different rate. So there's some other factors that we have to talk about and consider that the city's paying, and I would like to see the numbers, you know, the exact numbers, the average for the last three or five years, because I don't think, I don't recall it ever being at as low as $3 million. It's more like six or seven. So if the contract value talks about six, or three or four million, I'm pretty clear. I know specifically, there's been years where we paid a combined $12 million. That means we're spending out $6 to $7 million in waste removal, and we can't get the company to be accountable for picking up illegal garbage.
You know, I can't answer concerns regarding, I mean, obviously, paying a lot of money is something nobody wants to do, but I will tell you that, you know, based on breaking it down, what I do is, when I look at costs for a municipal contract, I break it down to what's it costing to have the truck come to your house? And given the number of times you collect at each home, and given that you have unlimited collection, you are being... you are being serviced for under $8 a month per household for collection, not disposal. Understand that, that's a separate number, but for a collection. I would say to you that on a price basis at $8 a month, you couldn't get anybody to come to your house twice a week for $8 a month, do anything. So you do have to bear in mind, when you, when you say the term 4 million, I agree with you, it's a lot of money, don't get me wrong. There's, there's no way to belittle that. The simple fact is, it is 4 million, but you do get, you have unlimited service in the city of Patterson, which is unusual today. Most municipalities and cities today, other than the major cities like yourself, have restrictions on the amount of solid waste that they will allow people to put at the curb. You can't, I understand why you can't do that, by the way, and I'm not suggesting that you do that. But I am saying to you...
That's not, that's not the case.
That is one of the reasons that your contract costs more. The other reason your contract costs more to do with the amount of material you put out. Allow bulky waste to be put at the curb.
Just bring the mic up and just we love, love... Mr. DeFeo.
Your city has to be collected with three-person crews.
Just let him know, please.
Mr. DeFeo, hold on one second.
With all due respect, and I, I apologize, because I walked in late in this conversation, and I, I'm, I know I wasn't present for the, the overview. But we hire consultants all the time, which consultants come in here and tell us this is a phenomenal deal. I will, I would like to see the price comparison of what this company is doing for a neighboring town like Belleville, where they render tremendous different, tremendously different service. And the fact that we have an unlimited service is not the case. Garbage men should not be taking bags with bottles in it, which they do. Garbage men should not be taking construction debris, which they do. They should, it's not an unlimited service. The fact that this garbage company has failed to render a quality service and protect the city's best interest, that was, that's what needs to be discussed. And the fact that if, if, if we want to sit here and by some fairy tale, imagine that there's not a relationship between this garbage company and this, and the waste transfer stations where they, they keep our numbers at an astronomical rate, then I guess they think that, you know, we're, we're not as, we're not intelligent enough to figure that out. But the service that's been getting rendered and the, the, the manner in which they disregard the policies that we, that's within the contract. They, we should be, this, this administration should be filing a lawsuit against this company because it's clear in the contract and they disregard the, the, the items that's right in the contract. And now we're being encouraged by scare tactics that, well, if we go out to bid, it's going to be 19% higher. How do we know that? How do we know that? How about if we go out to bid just for the services? And then we, we talk about putting inspectors on every truck that run with the trucks, that go with them to the transfer stations to make sure they're not dumping illegal garbage? What are we doing with that?
So, so Councilman, Councilman Mendez, you have the floor. Let me just state this real quick. So I was having a conversation with the BA and, and Mr. Ojeda, and I asked, why don't we have, like you stated, inspectors? And I went as far as saying, why, why they can't, why we can't ask them to have maybe also two cameras in each corner of the, of the back of the truck? We've got to use technology also, right? That way we could monitor it. That way you don't have to have 10 inspectors out there. Maybe you could monitor some of it also through the cameras and have also some inspectors out there monitoring because we have to enforce what's in the contract. You know, we might get another company, it might be, it might be the same or worse. We don't know. Even if we bring it in-house, we need to supervise. It's just something we need to do. Councilman Mendez.
Thank you, Council President and Mr. Ojeda. We, we have a very extensive discussion with Mr. Wayne at the DPW committee meeting, but this is the reality. You know, so the, the expectation that if we go out for a bid, it's going to be between 10 and 19, 1,000, 10, 10, or 19%. I mean, we are not in the best position because of COVID, we all understand that. But this is something that we need to talk about in this tonight, and it's that we have not held Roselli accountable for the job that they're supposed to do in the contract. We have not. So when you, when you hire me and we get into a contract, you need to hold me accountable. There's a contract, everything, everything is in writing. This administration have not held Roselli accountable. No supervision of the job that they've been doing, nothing, zero. And I guarantee you that. After we start bringing Roselli to our DPW committee meeting and calling them and making sure they only come to the meeting, a lot of things are changing. We don't have to make any complaint like before, so let's not mix both things. We understand that because of the situation, yes, it might be, we might get an increase on, if we go out for a bid. 10, 19%, we're talking about a lot of money. But on the other side, in a year, we're going to have to go out for a bid because we only renewed the contract for one year. Now, what I believe is the right thing to do is, you know what? Let's, let's work with Roselli for a year because we're going to have to go out for a bid in a year. But let's hold the administration accountable to make sure that they follow up with Roselli. If you hire my company and you don't follow up with me...
Can you hear me?
And I do 50% of the work, it's not my fault, you, you're not following up with me. So I think that we've been doing that, and in my request, the Roselli, they have to meet with the DPW committee meeting once a month, and they have to take all the complaints day by day with the chief of staff, and I will guarantee you that things will change. It's, there's not different of what PNCAG has been doing in the city for years. We're not following up with them. But now, going back to Roselli, we need to hold them accountable for the job that they're supposed to do. There's a contract in place, and I guarantee you, if the administration do their part, we could finish this and we could go out for a bid, and we could find a solution for this. So that, and on top of that, Mr. Wayne, you know, he's in the line. I was very, I'm very excited about getting a, a study about picking up our own garbage, bring that into in-house. The amount of job that we'll, that we're going to create is going to be incredible. I know this administration, the city, we're going to have, we're going to receive millions of dollars. And we got to make sure that we, we got to have the right plan in place, you know, to invest that money into our city. So I mentioned to him, and I made that request, to see if we could get that study and how feasible is for us to bring the garbage collection in-house in the future. I understand that we're not ready now, but I think that, that will be the right thing to do.
So, so council members, let me remind you, Mr. DeFeo will only be in the meeting until 7:15. He was here since 6:30. He allocated 45 minutes for us. He only has three minutes left. Councilman Mendez.
So I agree with my council colleagues. There's been many complaints about Roselli for a long time. With, I mean, we don't have to go into the details. It was one of the reasons why I asked for performance evaluation reviews so that we can evaluate the standards of service that are provided to the residents. But here's another concern for me. In the specifications of this resolution, it says that this contract shall be for a period of two years. Two years with the city having the option to extend the contract for two additional one-year periods. I think we give too much leverage to them. I think the contract, this should read that the contract should be for one year. It makes the bid more competitive, and it'll hold the, the company accountable as well as the administration. So I'm looking to see if we can change or amend this wording. And I'm not sure if it's a part of the procurement process, if it is. That's something we need to look at as well. But if we say that it should be two years, this is one of our problems, that they can do whatever they like for two years, which we've had, right? And then we come back, there was not the last bid, but the bid before that, they were the only company that...
Director, can you hear me?
The only...
They're just having a discussion, give us a second.
I, I have to jump, I have a, I told Harry, I have a 7:15 meeting.
All right, no problem, it's okay.
Okay.
All right, you can tell them, however, that the basic increase, I did a 10-year increase analysis real quick. Your, your, your costs have gone up about 3% a year over the last 10 years consistently for collection, just so you know.
Okay, well, let me, let me finish my point because he, he went somewhere else, but...
It's pretty, been pretty consistent.
Councilman Mendez?
If more questions, we can reschedule.
And just a point of recommendation, that the person on the phone should be present at these meetings. That way there could be some clarity in this meeting so that we can have them present. But just to go back into the wording, I'm not sure if that's the actual procurement process, and if it is, you know, I just want an explanation. But sometimes when we give too much leverage to these companies, it allows them to do what they're doing to the city. A lot of residents are complaining. What happens, first of all, with this? Because this is already April. This is what, a 60-day, we're trying to get a bid out within 60 days? How, what, how is that process, Madam BA? How does that work?
Sure. Council President, if I could just explain the, the two options that we have in front of us right now. We have the one option of going out to bid. And we would, if we decided, if the council decided to go with that option, then we would also have to have connected to that an extension of the current contract, which the company has allowed for, which would be until the end of October. So we would, the, our consultant would be working through the process of creating the big bid spec document, and then it would be advertised, and they would have 60 days to respond. The other option, which is the one that the administration would prefer at this point, which I've heard from some of the council members, is to take what's that extension called an option year. It's the last year of the current contract. That locks us in at just the 3% increase, not a 19% or, or potential of any other kind of increase. During that time, our consultant would also put together this study that says, what if we were to go in-house? And we would prepare the bid documents, no matter what, we have to go out to bid next year this time. So if, if we pull this reso off of the agenda for next week, that means we're choosing to just go with the option year that seals us in, and then we continue to make plans for what comes next.
So, so that's a concern for me, right? Because before us, what you stated is not in front of us. So I'm not sure, you had dialogue with whoever, I'm not sure. But I'm just saying, with the two options you just mentioned...
Right.
Just, can you just ensure that that information?
Well...
It's on the agenda.
No, I know, but I'm saying she just mentioned two options.
Right. Well, the, the second one, it's not mandatory for us to choose that right now, the option year, but the timing of it, the, the thing that we would have to, if we decided to go out to bid, that would have to happen now.
So that's what I'm saying, is that in writing, or is that just something that verbally stated?
Well, that's, that's part of what the consultant, like the timing of this process and the purchasing agent, you know, when he was here before, was saying, this, these, we're at that crossroads right now. And, and we're even at the point where we would have to extend the contract in order to get the full purchasing process done in time before we get a new vendor on board.
So you're looking for the council to make a decision whether they want to go with this procurement bid process or we want to go with the other option?
Yes, exactly, or continue with the option year, the last one on the current contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilman DeLaciz, actually, Councilman Cotton has the floor, then you. But I just want to say something real quick. I, I know you, you indicated that the consultant should be present, but, you know, I was told that because he haven't gotten his shots. He don't want to be, you know, he don't want to be among, you know, a lot of people, crowded people. So you got to be mindful also now, a lot of municipalities are having the meetings, you know, present. They're having it virtually still. So I don't think we should, you know, force him. Good suggestion, though.
It wasn't a force, it was a recommendation. I mean, as we saw, he was only here 45 minutes, so if someone has questions, we can't even ask him, he's gone. So it's just a recommendation. Even if he's not present, he should be present for the conversation.
So Councilwoman, I think 45 minutes, I'm not saying it's adequate time, but I think, you know, when we have an agenda, 45 minutes on an item, I think it's ample time. The problem is that we started 20 minutes late, the meeting. So they only gave us 25 minutes.
But we can't, but it's not, it's not for a debacle, it's just a point of reference. We have council members that are questioning an item. The professional is not on, he's, he's off. It doesn't, even if we were late, I mean, if you don't have a quorum, we understand that. I just made a point of recommendation. It doesn't need to be a point of conflict, it's just a recommendation. We're having a discussion, the, the expert is not here.
Thank you.
That, that's a concern. So my point of recommendation is still on the floor.
Thank you.
He should have been present until the end. Thank you.
There is normal practice, though, that the administration deals with the consultants. We bring them in here for additional questioning, but they present to the administration what the recommendations are. They present the whole outcome of the, of the analysis, working along with the purchasing agent. And then the administration presents that to us, right? And that's what they're here. You have Mr. Ojeda here representing DPW, and you have your business administrator here. Unfortunately, the purchasing agent is not here, but I'm sure he already had that discussion with the administration. If we have any questions, we could address them, or we don't have to address the consultant. Councilman Cotton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say to our director, I know that there's two parts to this garbage pickup contract. What they pick up and what we have to pay to be taken away, which is, which is two different amounts. What I can say too, yeah, all of us have gotten many, many complaints to, about the garbage pickups and, and what I found that I needed to do a lot was do the truck number. I know the truck number, you know, I can call the supervisor, you know, truck number so-and-so, and they know who's in what truck at, at, at what time. But, but what I find is that, and I know they also come in here, meet at the, the Roselli with Suburban for people who needs to have cleaning-out apartments. I call them cleaning-out apartments. Because sometimes you ride down the street and you see a whole apartment cleaned out. And they don't even call a private company, which I think I'd call the supervisor many times, meaning our, our inspectors, to say, you know, you need to go there because there's too much stuff out there. There's too much garbage out there. I think that, I think what would help us too, if I may suggest, that some of these apartment buildings with 30 and 40 and 50 units, they need to have their own contract. I came through Broadway one morning getting off work at 6 o'clock. This is a 30-unit apartment building, and the garbage was just everywhere, no cans, no nothing. You know, I remember stopping and saying to the garbage people, don't even pick that up because it was just bags of, of everything. But I think we need to look into, too, with some of these apartment buildings, and I'm not sure what legal, if we can, you know, we got apartment buildings, 20 units, and you see all this garbage out, like. We have to try to say to, to those apartment builders, you know, you got to pay to have your own garbage picked up. Once you say go pass it, maybe we need to pass a resolution like that. Once we pass 15 units, once you have 15 units, then you can get your own garbage picked up, and we're not going to be far as the city. And I think that, that would really help out a lot, you know. And I don't send the inspectors many times, and I want to say to my colleagues, I want to send the inspector many times. I got apartment units, eight, 10, 10 units, that the owner expected tenants to take out the garbage, you know, and buy their own garbage cans. So legal, we need to put something in place. I can see, especially those 30 units and those 40-unit buildings, that we can no longer keep picking up all that. But one of my council members said we spent $12 million. I don't remember it being that much, but, well, I don't remember it being, I'm talking. I don't remember it being that much, like, to say, I, I did not, you can show it to me, you can email it to me, that's fine. That's all, that's fine, just email it to me. But you have the collection piece, and then you have that. But, you know, I know one thing, that every time I needed to call Suburban or Roselli, their supervisor for stuff they did wrong, they do their best to accommodate. I know they, they have, they send people back, they send the trucks back or where they need to send. But I know they also need to try to do a better job with, with, with what's here. And I can say that this company of Roselli, everyone who's picking up the garbage are, are city residents. They live here in our city. So with that being said, I think that you need to take that back legal, the suggestion that I did about the 30, 40 units, you know, see what we can do. I send my inspectors out all the time when the garbage are not in cans, and they need to be in cans because it makes it a lot easier to pick up the garbage. So with that being said, Council President, thank you.
Councilman DeLaciz?
Thank you, Council President. I have a few questions, and I'll try to remain as brief as possible. So I like the administration, thank you for giving us the option, right? What the council wants to do, but I kind of understand where this is going. What's your recommendation for the administration? Because I, I know if we make an action, they're going to say, well, the council decided that. I would like to know on the record what the administration recommends, that the administration wants, and how to proceed. So it's out on the record, because if there is issues, we could say the recommendation, the administration wanted this.
Sure. Well, Councilman, it is the recommendation of the administration from the DPW directors to the purchasing agent, to our outside consultants, to the mayor, and the administration that we would take the option year and continue to work very diligently to hold Roselli accountable. And I, I know our chief of staff hasn't had a chance to speak to this yet, but I do know that they are working as a team really hard. And I joined one of their meetings where we had one of the owners there. So it's not a, it's not like we're just going to take an option year and then let them continue acting the way that they have. It is something that we're paying more attention to.
Thank you. So I just want to make a few comments, and let's keep it real here, right? We could talk about the company... We could talk about the company, and they do this, they do that. Even if we don't have this company, I'm sure the same problems we're dealing with will be, also will occur with another company, right? Even if we go in-house, I get complaints about recycling not being picked up, and that's in-house, right? So at the end of the day, it comes to enforcing, as Councilman Mendez said, enforcing and, and hitting the companies in the pocket for not doing the job that they're doing. I don't, you could bring company from, from California, you could bring the next company in, you're still probably going to see them taking construction debris, you're still going to see them probably not pick up things. And when we talk about in-house, we have an in-house recycling that I get calls constantly about it not being picked up. So to say that's going to figure out and be the end-all, be-all, and that's the magic brush that's going to figure, absolutely not. At the end of the day, we need to enforce our contracts, right? If they, if we catch them doing illegal dumping, there should be a fine for the company. There should be a fine, right? We, you know, we find in Friday, they don't pick up a certain block? Not the supervisor of Roselli should investigate. Whoever's our liaison in-house that's representing the interest of the residents should say, you know what, you missed Maryland Nav, here's a thousand dollar fine for missing this block on your route. That's the only way this is going to work, until we hold them accountable, and that needs to be in the RFP. So when we, when our consultant's making that big RFP, and I, and the council president said something right, we need ten trucks that probably have cameras on them. You can't, you know what, I guarantee for a twelve million dollar contract, a company could buy twenty wireless tru- uh, cameras and hitch it on the side of the, of the, of the, of the, of the trucks. So these are the things that need to be in the RFP when we go out. I don't know if it's going to be in April or next year. That's where the council, and I actually would like to hear the chairman's recommendation from the committee, because I know they had a more thorough discussion about it. I heard the administration, I'd like to hear the council's recommendation, just when I close up. But to think that the, the company's changing, or we're going to go in-house, and I would love to see that analysis, right? I, I, I'm not going to make my decision about the in-housing until I see an analysis and then be fair, open. But until we hold these companies accountable, the next company that comes in will probably do the same thing, right? And I want to see what the prices are when we go out to bid. Because if I go to my resident to say, hey, you don't like Roselle, we could go to company B, right? We go to company B, but it's going to cost us six million dollars and about an eight percent tax increase. You let me know if you want me to decide, I would gladly go to my constituents with that and see how they feel. So, Mr. Chairman, I know the DPW committee had a thorough discussion with the, with this, this consultant and the directors and some of the, what do you recommend how we go, or the committee recommends?
Council President, and definitely I do agree that we have to go for one more year, an extension. In a year, we're going to be in a much better position to go out for a bid. I know this pandemic, we're going to be also in a better position, because due, due to the pandemic, I, I'm very sure, and we had that conversation with Mr. Wayne, about the increase that we definitely will get if we go out for a bid. Regardless, in a year, we have to go out to the market, and I'm very sure that we're going to be in a better position. Now, enforcement, and we all agree on this, enforcement is going to be the key. It doesn't matter the company that we hire, if we don't follow up, that's what happens when you don't follow up. And this administration, they never hold Roselli accountable until now. We called the owner of Roselli to the DPW committee meeting, and it's my request that once a month, they're going to have to come in and have a conversation with us and going over line item by line item on the contract, and the things that they're not doing. So once we do that, the, the service is going to be effective, and we're going to be on top of that. And I'm working with the chief of staff to make sure that those phone calls early in the morning, when they don't, when they miss a route, if they missed the route today, the next day in the morning, they have to start right there. Our senior, our resident, they don't need to put the garbage back inside when they take the garbage out. If they didn't pick it up first time in the morning, they have to start right there on the route. And that's agreement, that have to be in writing, and I'm looking forward, you know, to have that conversation on our next committee meeting, but we should go out for one more year. Now, another conversation that we have in our, in our, in our DPW committee meeting, about NBA, it was about those building, we have a lot of the different building, twenty, fifty unit, and all the municipality, when, when, when they have those construction, they automatically designate some area for garbage to, to put a dumpster on. None of those building in the city of Patterson have those area. I see a lot of nice building, but guess what? We have to work with the planning and zoning to make sure that they include that. And it's the city, it's also responsible to pick up the garbage in those building. But instead of having fifty or twenty cans outside, you will have a dumpster, it will be more organized, and the city will be clean, the community will be much in a better, you know, condition. You see a lot of those building picking up, throwing, taking garbage on a plastic bag out, it's a disaster. I think that they have those area, and they have to be, they have to be, you know, on the, when they go for planning and zoning and the other adjustment, that have to be stipulated right there. You have twenty unit, fifteen, ten, you got to have a dumpster to make sure that they just deposit the garbage there, and it's going to be more effective for us to pick it up. And that's something doable, fixable, and we don't have to wait two or three years to do it. So I think we, we should start taking action, and then closing, going out for one more year. Thank you, Council President.
Excuse me, Council President.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, Della, yeah, you did ask for the floor. Let's try to wrap this up, we're going to have you and then Councilman Jackson, and we're going to wrap this up. We've already been discussing this item for fifteen minutes. We already had discussions on this previously, in a previous meeting, and this was also discussed in workshop, so, Della and then Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to make clarity on, like I hear a lot of your colleagues say, for the record, I want to be sure that it is on the record that, three months ago, we started meeting with Roselli. Right after our big snowstorm, we began monthly meetings with them. We will be encountering our third meeting with them in the month of April. That meeting entail not just having their supervisors appear, but to have the owners themselves come. So it's either John or his brother Robert that comes to the meetings with us. We are going to infuse them into a monthly meeting with DPW, I mean DPW committee. I also want to say that, not only are we holding them accountable, but we are making sure that the fines that are already invol- that are already stipulated inside of the contract are now being followed. About having cans replaced, if they are not properly placed back. And the other piece is to talk about when they do miss a pickup. So I will be reporting back that meeting that we have with them as the administration to the DPW committee, and we will be asking them to also join us periodically with the DPW committee meetings, so that we can make sure that everyone is being held accountable. I do want to say on behalf of my office that we are taking it very seriously. We are seeing a decline in our complaints in the last three months. We have seen a decline, and I will also provide that information, Councilman Mendez, at your next meeting.
Thank you.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Council President. Before you close your mic, Ms. Fisher, can you tell me how many summonses have been issued to this company in the last, since this, this, this epiphany of, of enforcement has taken place?
Also to the epiphany, Councilman Jackson.
You, you're just, you're just the messenger, don't, don't take, let it go through where it needs to get to.
I got you, I got you. But here, I do want to say that I am not equipped tonight to give you an answer.
Have any summonses been written?
I don't have any written right now with that.
I'll be honest with you, the director of DPW is not here, and neither is the inspectors. What I will do, I will follow up with you, give me to the end of the week, and I will give some numbers.
Give me a report on how, what the summonses that were written, what were they written for, how much were they for, and so on and so forth. So...
As a matter of fact, do me a favor, if you, if, after this meeting, shoot me an email, and I'll get right back to you.
I assure you. So to the public, because I can't just sit here and listen to all of this nonsense. This is why government is so full of crap. You have one council person saying, oh, well, you know, everybody, if they're going to have, no, no. They, they're paid to do a job, there's a contract already. Why do we need another agreement to bring the owners in here, to go through it line by line? If they don't understand the contract, why do they understand it in Belleville so well? Then you have another council person saying, well, thank you, administration, for putting to, it's the council that decides what we're going to do. We don't take instruction from the administration. What we do here is we hold the administration accountable. And this administration has clearly failed, because you see time and time again, I, I dare, I challenge anyone in the audience, anyone at home, please text me, tell me that you've received immaculate service from this, this service provider. Tell me they haven't taken your cans and just tossed them on the side, throwing them around. Tell me they haven't picked up garbage on your block that they should not be picking up by taking a few dollars from your neighbor. Tell me that, tell me this is what's going on. Tell me that this administration is holding them accountable, just like the furniture company in front of City Hall that just blatantly disregards the law, and this freaking administration fails again. So here, we have a company who's in business, they're taking a grunt now because of failed administration. Now, it's just like anything else. If you have a dog, the dog is acting crazy, you send it to my house, the dog now knows how to act. He's not eating, eating on the furniture, pissing, urinating all over the place, because it's the way in which you, you do business with them, it's the way in which you handle the dog. This dog obviously does not know how to treat the city of Patterson. And guess what, the administration has not held them accountable. We have a clear contract that says, these are the do's and don'ts. You need a receptacle, fine, okay, we, we give an allowance because residents, really mostly absentee landlords, don't buy receptacles for their tenants. So their tenants put it out in any kind of way, a food town bag, shopping bag, and then it gets thrown all over the place, it blows all over the city, and, and then we, we don't even want to hold them accountable, because we have an administration that takes inspectors from certain divisions, moves them around, so they don't write tickets, and you don't want to issue summonses. But the fact of the matter is, the residents are paying for this service, and they're getting a terrible service. It's a poor service. So since the administration is not doing their job, it is now under the purview and the responsibility of this council to act responsibly and put in place measures so that the administration could then follow through. Guess what, we may have to put training wheels on this bike, because they can't ride it, obviously. They, they're not able to ride this bike. It's too big, too many gears, can't reach the pedals. So it's our responsibility to hold them accountable, not come here and talk about, well, even if we hire another company, then they going to mess up too. No, what, this same company does a great job in Belleville. I've driven there, go to my Facebook page, just look at the video. I followed the trucks around, they don't throw the cans all over the street. There's no garbage laying around, they pick up the garbage responsibly, they're out of the city in a, in a, in a, in a early, accurate time, and they don't have to get called back with neighbors, with residents don't have to wait till the following day for a pickup, just to get their garbage picked up. This is, this is disrespectful, but it's not surprising, it's Patterson.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. And not to prolong the conversation, but it's with everything. We have ordinances that don't get enforced, we have a contract that don't get enforced, it's with everything. So what we need is, in the upcoming budget, I'm speaking to the administration, you have the resources in place to enforce the ordinances that are in place, inspectors to enforce the contracts also that we have in place. You know, we have a lot of issues, sometimes people try to get a lead inspection here. People waiting with section A vouchers, they can't even move, you know, in over a month, because we don't have enough lead inspectors, I know you're hiring some. But the resources are in place, we just need to make sure that we enforce our laws. Other towns enforce them, we don't, that's, that's the end of the story. Now, talking about rules and, and procedures, this council has a procedure, and it has it for a long time. It's not a law, it's just a procedure in order for us to operate a certain way. We, we have committees, structure. Sometimes we give, you know, sometimes the committee chair, sometimes make a decision with a good reasoning to maybe add something to an agenda, because of the timing concerns or restraints, right? But we have two items here tonight that have not made it to committee. One of them did make it to committee, the other one didn't. You have item twenty-three and twenty-four on the agenda. I think Councilman Jackson requested for those items to go, you know, on the agenda. I understand item twenty-four, we asked the administration in finance, and I think Councilman Jackson was part of those meetings, to, that's, we needed to do something with that property, you know, we can no longer leave it the way it is. But the way it works is, you know, we discuss things in committee, and then we move along. And yes, oftentimes, we hold the administration accountable, but most of the things that go in here have to come from the administration when it comes to, you know, operations and things of that nature. Now, my recommendation, council colleagues, in the interest, I don't want to set president here, because why have committees then? If we're just going to add every meeting, we're just going to add things on the agenda that should go through a committee, right? We have procedures in place, and I don't want to set the president that...
Council President.
I haven't finished, yeah, sure. All, all I'm asking is, forget me being the president, this is not about me. Someone else is going to probably go to be the president in July. And this is about the council as a body, we need, we need to have a structure here. And the coun- my council colleague meant well when he put this here, you know? But it still needs to go through committee. I think number twenty-three was presented over a year and a half ago. It didn't, it didn't go through the committee, the committee didn't recommend it at the time, that's why it never got done. And I don't see that, personally, I don't see the urgency, it will, I spoke to... Hold on a minute. Councilman Jackson asked for the floor. Councilman Abdelaziz is, is the chair of the committee, which is street naming number twenty-three. And we don't want to have a long, lengthy discussion on these items, I'm going to recommend that, that we, you know, remove them from the agenda for now, take it back to committee, and then we bring it back here to the floor. I'll give, Councilman Jackson, do you mind if I ask the chair?
You give Councilman Jackson, do you want to speak first? Councilman Jackson, all right.
So, so, talk, in relative to process, okay? I'm basically exercising my, my ability to bring to the public's attention matters in which, all of you can acknowledge, have been pressing for me for the past three, maybe more years, okay? I have a derelict property that's sitting vacant, that's not getting any tax dollars, that is an eyesore, that is a magnet for vagrancy. It's across the street from Jean's Lickin' Store, for all those of you who don't know this property. And we have an opportunity, we had, we probably missed it, an opportunity to bring it back into tax rolls and recover it from its current condition, whereas it is sitting heavily contaminated. So if I can't get it done in committee, then I need to bring it to the floor in this fashion, and that's what I'll do. The, the other item, gentleman isn't in the audience, he has petitions that signed over several hundred residents. I've sent emails, I've worked on it, I've been a part of this process several years ago as well. I continue to work on it. I asked the clerk, have we received any feedback from the chair? We respectfully followed the process, we got everything together, reissued the paperwork, the gentleman had to go recover it, because it was lost from his last time, his last submission. Went, redid this, the petitions, so on and so forth. We submitted it to the chairman, we did, we did not get an answer. So I should not have to wait, wait weeks just to get an answer from an item that needs to be discussed. This public business needs to continue. The public, their best interest needs not to be overlooked and/or ignored and/or undermined. And my concern for my ward, I mean, you know, I've, we've had various councilmen take shots and say, well, you can't get anything done. Well, yes, because if council members aren't trying to, to, to do something that, I don't benefit from this. I don't live across the street from this building, but it is in my ward, I would like to see it get taken care of. Why is it being tabled for so long if there's not? Three years, this administration, I met with the director of economic development the first day he was installed, right on the corner of Arch and North Main. As a matter of fact, Presidential and Arch, because there's another vacant lot there. We discussed turning that property over to the adjacent owner, so they can take ownership, clean it, maintenance it, and pay taxes on it, nothing ever happened. So, listen, I can't continue to talk about how many balls are getting dropped by this administration. If it was a basketball game, it'd be a blowout. But I, I don't know, maybe he has an answer, maybe the chairman wants to talk about why he didn't answer, answer the request, and we can talk about some of the other things as well.
Before you go, Councilman Adelisi, let me, let me address number twenty-four, because Councilman Jackson is correct. So Councilman, Councilman Dabila, Councilman Jackson, and who else was in that committee? Councilman Klik, Finance? So we had a conversation about a year, a year ago, a year and a half ago, actually, maybe longer. And the, the, I, I asked the administration to do foreclosure proceedings, not just this property, on many properties, this property's been laying there probably for fifteen, twenty years. We're at a point now...
Thirty years, thirty years.
Well, so, it, it's ridiculous that we're at a point right now where we probably haven't collected millions of dollars on these properties throughout this time. And I asked the administration, let's do foreclosure proceedings on all those properties that have not paid taxes, that we hold uh, city-held liens. That means liens that investors did not buy, right? They're held by the city. That means they didn't, nobody paid us for those taxes. So I also had a conversation with the administration today that it's unexcusable not to do it. So if you need to hire, this was my, my, my recommendation, right? To the council colleagues, if they decide to do that, they're gonna have to come before us for us to approve it. I said, if you don't have the, the, the staff in your legal department to do the foreclosure proceedings, not on just this property, on a lot of properties, hire a consultant to come in and do it. Because it's unacceptable that we have so many properties not paying taxes. So all I'm asking, uh, Councilman Jackson, I understand your measure. Uh, that's something probably that I would have done. Uh, because we're at a point right now that it was over a year and a half ago and we still haven't done anything with this property. More than a year, right? So, so, it's been a while.
Three years.
It was, it was, actually, it was before you were a BA, Kathleen.
The CFO.
Yes, yes, so, so I understand where, where Councilman Jackson came from. Um, now, I'm gonna let Councilman Abdalaziz um, speak on number twenty-three, yes.
Council President. Once again, this is the purview of the council. We don't have to ask the administration's permission to do any of this. We do have to get uh, uh, the approval because it, it requires, it's a state law. So our, our tax collector has to sign off on it. But we don't have to ask the administration, we've been asking them to do all kinds of things. The property on Madison Avenue, if any of you know that property, the same exact thing happened, it was a chemical company. We put it in the hands of the administration to demo it, to take care of it. They dropped the ball. They did not do the demolition, they did not remove the uh, the, the contamination. There's still basements there, but yet this council approved the demolition bill. We approved the, the, the payments to the company that did the service and left the city without completing the job. So I don't want to go through the same thing with this council president. I'm asking for the council. Um, the, the administration had their opportunity. Move or get off the seat, it's somebody else's turn.
So, so, Councilman, the thing, the thing is this, last time we had the discussion um, in finance, the administration was to, supposed to look into whose responsibility it is to do the cleanup. You recall this, Councilman Da- uh, Councilman Davila?
So where's the report?
So, 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 so hold on. So all I'm saying is, although you feel that, yes, the council could act, most of the things have to come from the administration. All we need to hold them is accountable to see when they're gonna do this. So do we have a timeline on when we're gonna be doing this?
So when are we holding them accountable?
To do the foreclosure proceedings on all those properties.
Council President.
Hold on a minute, Councilman Abdalaziz have the floor, um, right after-
You mentioned my name and-
I understand, but Councilman Abdalaziz have the floor and then you could um, Council, um, I mean, Madam BA, please.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I know we were just discussing this tonight. Um, we did have some staff losses and under the previous Corporation Council, the goal was to hire someone with more of that kind of developmental experience, the real estate experience, which was what we've lost. Um, and that hasn't happened yet. So I, I agree with you and I take your suggestion and we will discuss it and to make sure that we're able to allocate money from the budget to have another, you know, and again, I haven't had a chance to talk with Corporation Council about this, but one possible path is to go for an outside, to have an outside law firm help us through this process. At each time we have, um, we have a property that we're able to go through on the list and just kind of go one by one and go through it. I, I would like to remind everybody that this, because of the pandemic, there were a lot of challenges that the city has had to do over this exact same time period we're talking about. But we're at a place to address this.
So, so just so you know, this was before the pandemic and my frustration, my frustration being the finance chair is that when, when I started, when I started here, I asked the, the, the previous CFO and the previous BA to basically give me a list of all the properties of all the city-held liens. And the whole time we were told that because we have two different softwares, KVS cannot do this, this. I said, well, you know what, just hire somebody, get a staff member to go analyze each one and do an analysis. And to this day, three years later, we still haven't done anything. And my intent was not to bash the administration, is to get things done. We're, we're sitting here, basically, and nothing is getting done. And it's not even the resp- our responsibility. So all I need is, is to get a report, please, within the next two weeks of what we're doing. And then two weeks later, another report. We need, probably need the same thing with the garbage company. Like, what are we doing to monitor, what are we doing to this? Because we no longer could just ask for things and not, you know, follow up.
And I know our CFO does have that listing of, we were talking about it today, the listing of properties that have city liens. And, but on this issue, I think what complicates this issue really is the environmental impact uh, question. And that's why it's a complicated one that um, would have to involve NJDEP and, and, and like you said, there, there are other components. So I, I will circle, like you said, this wasn't, I, I have never addressed this issue, but I'm happy to start looking at this now.
Council President.
And having it, have the options available so that we have the full understanding of what it would be.
So the, the bottom line is something needs to be done. We cannot go months and months without doing anything. We already waited too long, it needs to get done. Hold on a minute, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Abdalaziz, you want to address number twenty-three?
Yes, Council President, thank you.
Can we stay here?
And um-
The thing is, we, we brought both of them up. Council President, thank you very much for giving the floor to address some of the comments that my colleague from the first ward has stated. But I would like to just put some facts onto the record. Unfortunately, for something, doing it this way really undermines the process that the city has. And we actually have an ordinance established on what gears us for street naming, but I'm gonna stick to the facts. I received an email from, not Councilman Jackson, but his secretary on behalf of Councilman Jackson requesting to have a portion of Tent that have named Jamaica Heroes Way. I responded back, I received that email at March eleventh, twelve twenty-one PM. I responded back March twelfth, five thirty-three PM. Approximately twenty-four hours that, that I got back. Councilman Cotton, Councilman Davila also responded to that email. So I did address it and my response was, the council, the street naming committee will be uh, having a meeting soon to speak about this item and other items that were proposed by council members. Couple of weeks later, I received another email yesterday for the status of this. I responded back at eleven fifty-one on April fifth. The street naming committee will meet Thursday uh, to discuss this item and other items that have been proposed to us. That is the process. In between those timeframes, we had Holy Week for some of my colleagues that, that celebrate, that I didn't want to host it, Councilman Davila, uh, we had that discussion because there, we do get numerous requests. This is the process, the way government works. This is the first time I've received this. To bring it to workshop, Council President, there are some, some discussions that we need to have. And out of respect to my colleague that's sitting next to me, which is in her ward, that she needs to be part of the process, this is her ward. And this is where the street naming committee hears it out, let's discuss it. And then we bring it back so it's not a political football for something that should be a joyous occasion. So Council President, I did receive it on March eleventh. I don't know what happened years prior, I wasn't there. The street naming committee's meeting on Thursday to discuss this very item with other items that my council colleagues have proposed. I, my, my uh, my leadership on this committee is to bring to the council, after the committee discussed, the numerous items that each council member has. And then we could vote as a body for all the items that people have proposed that make it out of committee. So therefore, Council President, I do recommend that this goes to committee because there are some issues that, uh, that the committee needs to discuss. And then instead of taking an hour and a half discussing it here, we'll be discussing it Thursday. And like you stated, Council President, there is a, a process in place that the council, and, and even the ordinance states, all, all, all street naming must go to this ad hoc committee. That's what our ordinance states. It states it in there, and if you want me to send the ordinance to the entire body, I'll email it right now. And I look forward to discussing this. I'm sorry to the residents, it should have been held, um, committee, which we'll be having on Thursday. Thank you, Council President, I recommend it goes back to committee.
I, I, I go next.
Councilwoman Davila, then Councilwoman Cotton.
So, just to clarify, because it almost seems as though, you know, this item is, has been ignored, and that's not what happened. So for clarification purposes, um, this-
Can you speak into the mic?
Yeah, this came before us and the sitting councilman at the time, okay, of, of the third ward, requested it for it to be put on hold. Okay, so it was not any of us, it was not the committee, it was the sitting councilman of the third ward at the time who requested it. He had issues with the name, okay? Issues with the location. He said he had some other recommendations. And I said, well, you need to go back and meet with the group, okay? Talk to Councilwoman Cotton, okay, and get it going. That is why this was put on hold. Hence, pandemic comes, other things come, and this is where we are right now. So, I don't want anyone thinking here that we're trying to put one community, oh, you know, and not, not be supportive or, you know, I, I know that Councilman Jackson mentioned the gentleman that's here, you know, and I don't want to name him by his name, but you know, he consistently sent emails, what are we doing, what are we doing? And it was the sitting third ward councilman that requested that. So I wanted to say that. The other thing I wanted to just say is, uh, in terms of the conversation that we had in finance, uh, pertaining to, I believe it's, um, what is it?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. One of the things that you asked, uh, as the chair of finance, you asked the CFO, since that, uh, that property had already gone through, I believe it was a, a, a lien sale, you said, can they not go forward, can we move forward with this item?
Yes.
And she specifically said, yes, you don't have to put it back, you don't have to start, you can start the whole process because it already went through a process. So to the BA, to start it all over when the CFO did indicate that because it had already been on various lists. So not just once, you know, it's been almost thirty years, but um, so, so the BA would have to sign off on it.
No.
Tax collector.
The tax, okay. But I, so I just wanted to clarify those two things because, you know, to start the process again, you know, when it, it has already been on various uh, sale lists, you know, I, I, I think, in terms of that, I understand what Councilman Jackson is saying and I did want to support this item. And we've been trying to do it for the past two and a half years.
Councilwoman, I'm, I'm in agreement, and I don't want to get back and forth, I'm in agreement, but the, the issue is this. Something like this, even calculations, when, when you speak to the CFO, and I spoke to him today, when you speak to the CFO and you speak to the, to the tax collector, and you ask a question, for example, how much, you know, will we, you know, sell this for? Oh, we haven't looked at the numbers yet. So I understand Councilman Jackson's action, you know, to try to expedite this.
The number's been done multiple times.
They don't have it, Councilman, so, you have the CFO?
The, the, the numbers have been done, multiple times.
So, Councilman-
Anyway, thank you, thank you very much, Council President.
Councilwoman Cotton, you have the floor, Councilwoman.
Um, it's, it's, no, it's my turn. I'm sorry, thank you, Council President. I just, um, as my councilwoman sitting next to me, Councilwoman Davila, talked about what was happening. And let me tell you something, even then, I, as the council person of that ward, did not know that this was going on. No one ever said anything to me about naming that. Then after it was brought forward about what was happening, then, like you said, the pandemic hit, but my understanding is that, and I don't have a problem naming it Jamaica Way. I've lived in that area for thirty-seven years. Nobody ever came around to my house asking me to sign no petition to name Jamaica Way. I don't have a problem with, I've been in that area with everyone in that area all these years. Just come to me. Now, so, of course, the person, you know, it went through, one councilman, he's not here, went through a councilwoman, uh, it went through, and then all along, they leaving me out the picture. Councilman, wait a second, no. When the e- no, when, no, 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 you're not. But when the email did come, I did send an email to everybody and I said, please call me, I have to give you some concerns that I have about the situation. I never got a call about the concerns. So then, I'm still getting calls and I would love to make it Jamaica Way. Love to, because I've lived in that area for thirty-seven years. They've been my friends for thirty-seven years I've been there. But, so I said, okay, let me just understand, like, what's really going on. I got all these petitions, right? So I said, let me print them out. And let me, let me just print them and see. The secretary said, Councilwoman, it's two hundred pages, okay? Print out two hundred pages. My concern is that if I'm gonna go into an area to name an area, wouldn't most of the signatures would be from the area? It would be from the area, not another area. It would be from, it would be from the area. I don't, I'm not against Jamaica's, I'm not against none of that. You left me out of the loop, I was not even in the loop. So I went through each of these petitions and we, and, and, and I'm gonna offer to them to have one of my aides to go in the area to say, this is what we want to do. Are you for this or are you not for this? People who don't live in passing can't be signed no petition, changing no name. They can't do that. They gotta be the people in the area, it gotta be. And, and I would never go into any of my ward, councilpeople's ward and do anything without letting them know. I don't have a problem with this at all, I don't. But don't, don't force something on me and I'm in the area and you don't even ask me. And, and I'm not gonna never go in no councilmember's ward, never, and do something without, I, I'm gonna let you know. And I can explain everything. I would explain what's, this is what I'm getting, and this is what I'm getting. And I don't have a problem, and now, if you want to use my aide to help, they would do that. But I think the people who live in the area needs to have to say, this is what we want to do, or this is not what we want to do. That's all, and I love, living where I've been for thirty-seven years. I've been around, oh, I know everybody just about, from Twenty-sixth Street to Twenty-eighth Street, from Ninth Ave to Eleventh Ave, you know, to me, it should be that section. That's all I'm saying. And you know, and it should have never gotten to this because if, if the council person, I sent the email, please call me, like, so I can explain everything. It was said, I, I just, and I love where I live. It's, it was considered, and it's still considered a hotspot, but I still love where I live. Because I got some wonderful people that live in that area with me.
Yes, they do.
That'll want to do the right thing and want to make sure everything is okay. But you know, I would never overbound and overstep other councilmembers. I don't do that because that, that's not how you're supposed to do. You're not supposed to do stuff like that.
Yes. Council President, as you can see, all the, the issues with this item, I refer back to committee. We've already spent forty minutes on items that-
Council President, I, I thought I requested the floor, did he ask for the floor? Or is he just blurting off, is he just speaking? What is he doing?
He raised his hand, but I didn't acknowledge him.
Did he ask for the floor, or I mean, are you kicking him out of the meeting? What's gonna happen next?
Council President, he already extended this meeting by an hour or two.
Council President, I asked for the floor, I was next to him. Did he ask, he spoke already?
I was speaking to you, that's why I couldn't uh, stop him, but go ahead, go ahead, Councilman.
So, so listen, with all due respect, I mean, I, 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 I respect the work that everyone does. This was an effort to get this thing acknowledged, okay? And I, I will acknowledge that the councilman did send an email back on the twelfth. But this item has been lingering for several years. Now, let me say this. We're here to represent the public, it's about what the public wants, what the public needs. A former councilman should not be able to keep something from an agenda or from making, from taking motion or action. But let me say this, I've been here all my life and I've known, I've always, always had great close relationships with the Jamaican community, Jamaicans. You know, who is, who are, who are fa- like family. To have, when you sit here, when, when a gentleman comes forward and he knows that he made a submission, but yet there's multiple streets being named after that one, and he, his item is still sitting on the shelf, he wants to know why as well as the people who, yes, maybe some of the people that don't live here anymore, but I'm sure that they have a tie to, a connection to the city. I own a business on Grand Street. I didn't get petitioned when, when it was up to be named Mexico Way. And I asked everybody who owned businesses and houses across the street from me, they didn't either. But I still supported it because I, I understand that there are Mexicans that have moved in that area. Really, they just own businesses there because it's not, they, they, it's not, that area is not in uh, uh, overran or heavily populated by Mexican, Mexican residents. But we named that street. And all, every, every, every community deserves the same opportunity to be acknowledged across the board.[1745.34] the same opportunity to be acknowledged across the board. That's my point. So, it's not about who, you know, I, and, and from, and from what I've gathered, because I asked the gentleman, did he speak, and I, I thought you was a part of the conversation, thought you was on the committee, included on the email strand. I mean, if you want me to come personally and ask, I mean, I could do that too, but it's not for me. It's for the resident. Now, furthermore, Council President, and I'll, I'll wrap this, I'll finish this with you, because I'm very disappointed. See, now we're gonna challenge the administration to go back and do something that they, we, they could, they failed to do in the past, right? Off of the, not on the, the street naming item, but the, the issue on Madison Avenue, where the Director of Community Improvement, I'm sorry, the Director of Code Enforcement, tried to force the Director of Community Improvement to sign off on paperwork that was incomplete, that, that he definitely brought forward to this administration for an investigation, which still have not taken place. We're gonna ask them to go back and do this again with another property, where they clearly failed on Madison Ave. The residents don't deserve to continue to wait, and the first ward residents keep getting crapped on, because we are failing to take action. And it's, it's be, it's gonna come before us soon. We're gonna pay the price on it, because these, these things continue to happen. Now they want to go out and hire another professional, or somebody else who has experience. Listen, we have the opportunity to put this thing back on the tax rules, to take it out of the hands of the administration, and allow someone else to do the foreclosure, to do the abatement, and then if there's a failure, if they don't pay their taxes, then, then we take it back, and guess what? The city has a benefit there. Or if they say, "Well, guess what? It's gonna cost two million dollars to remediate it, or get rid of the, the contamination", then they can do something different. But we can't just continue to sit here, over and over again. This is the same thing you did a year ago, when I asked you to do this item, then you asked the administration, "Oh, this, can you go out and do?" And they did nothing. They failed. They did nothing. So, what should I go, when I go back and walk through my community tomorrow, what should I tell the residents that live across the street from there, where this vacant, derelict property is depreciating the values? Oh, because a, a large-scale hu- housing investor doesn't want to buy it, now we don't want to do anything with it. It's time to put this thing, put this property back on the roads. I'm tired of sitting here and watching nothing get done. We're watching the paint dry for no reason. And this is the reason, and, and listen, if I gotta continue to put items on the workshop agenda, just so it could get the community's attention, and so the community can understand that I'm here, I'm trying to do my best work to, to work through whatever challenges that are being presented, the council has an opportunity to do something here, and I'm asking for that to happen. The, the administration has failed the previous projects, and, and this would be a failure again. And, and now, relative to the, to the resolution for Tenth Avenue, listen, all I wanted was discussion. We could pull it.
Thank you.
We can allow it to go through committee. The gentleman, I'm sure he'll speak during public portion. He'll express himself. And, you know, I'm sure that, you know, and I called him last minute, otherwise I'm sure he'll have, he would have had a lot more people here. I just got the item put on the agenda this afternoon, because I asked, "Have we gotten a response?" No, nothing. Okay. He responded today. Anyway, I'll rest in here.
So, let me just, Councilman, I, I know you've been waiting, Councilman, Mendez. Let me just clarify to the council what this resolution, I mean, to the, to the residents what this resolution is. Basically, it's to sell the taxes that the owner have not been paying. We tried this twice already, and nobody purchased it. So, it's not that we haven't tried. I don't know when was the last time, but maybe the CFO clarified. What I'm saying is, why the city doesn't take ownership of the property? And then, you know, we should have taken ownership long time ago, maybe over ten years ago. But, you know, we revived this conversation three years ago to do a foreclosure proceeding, but we already tried twice to sell the taxes for this, you know, whatever taxes, at ten percent, ten percent of, of two million dollars, right? Uh, which is, actually, no, it was five percent, right? They want to start the minimum bid on this one, a hundred thousand dollars. Now, whoever buys this, which no one was interested, twice, that doesn't guarantee that somebody's gonna come and buy it, and buy the taxes on this.
You're misquoting.
So, so, hold on a minute.
You're misquoting, though. You should clarify that.
What, which part?
You're not, we're not selling the property for a hundred thousand.
We're not.
We're selling the rights.
The tax.
To the, to the lien.
Yes. That's what I just said. We don't own the property right now. This property's owned by someone else. All we're doing is selling the taxes, right? All, that's all we're doing. That doesn't mean that someone is interested. We already tried twice. What I told the administration is, let's, let's, let's stop, you know, continuing to put this out there, and stop losing, uh, uh, let's, let's try to stop losing money, and let's do a foreclosure proceeding, not just on this property, on every other property that hasn't paid taxes in a long time. It's simple. It's not just one property. We have an issue that we need to address, and that was it. You accomplished what you wanted, Councilman Jackson. It was a great move. At first, I, I was, I got, you know, I said, you know, we're messing the whole process here in the council, but you got to accomplish what you were looking for. You revived the whole thing. Um, I expect to see something by next week on this item, which way we're going. Are we gonna do this discounted sale, or are we gonna do a foreclosure, uh, a foreclosure proceeding, so we could own the property? But it cannot remain the way it is, like it has remained for the last thirty years.
Council, can I just say, very quickly?
Council.
Councilwoman Mendez, very quickly, if we, if we're gonna do that, and you're gonna push for that, instead of supporting me, and suppo, instead of supporting what we, what we've been working on for the past two years, and if you're gonna turn, switch gears, and then expect the administration to do a foreclosure, I'm expecting you will have a full plan, in which the administration is gonna be able to execute. What are they gonna do with it? How's the demolition?
That's part of the, we're gonna, we're gonna have.
I mean, we can't just, they dropped the ball so many other times, and then we're gonna expect them to do it, do it right this time.
Councilman, but, but that's, that's part of the conversation. We're gonna have in finance for the next finance meeting, um, Madam BA. That's part of the conversation we had today. A foreclosure on the property is not the end of it. We need to have a plan in place, which should have been in place a long time ago, but better late than never, right? So, we need to know what we're doing with this property. If not, we're gonna go to the, to the, um, we're gonna try the lien sale again. Doesn't guarantee that it's gonna happen, but if you don't have a good plan in place of how we're gonna do the foreclosure, uh, you know, proceedings, and what to do with the property once we own it, because that's another thing. It leaves us in almost the same situation. If, if we do the foreclosure proceeding, and we take ownership of the, of the property, what are we gonna do? We're gonna do the same thing we did when we had the, the Armory, right? We owned the Armory for a long time, and we didn't do anything with it. We need to, we need to, we need, we need, we need to hear what we're gonna do by next Tuesday. I want a plan in place.
Thank you.
Councilman Mendez.
Thank you, Council President. And just, uh, let me address, um, item number twenty-three, um, the street naming. And I definitely want to say that, for me, it's gonna be a great honor for me to acknowledge the Jamaican community, since I'm the councilman of the third ward, most of the Jamaican community, that's their home, the third ward. And I'm looking forward to work with all the stakeholders, hand in hand, to resolve the matter. I know there's some issues about the location. We're gonna sit down. It's very sur- surprising to me that the, the previous councilman, he just put it on the side and put it on hold, and never took any action on. It's very concerning. It's very surprising to me, uh, since he should be the one pushing for that. But nevertheless, uh, Councilman Jackson, I, I would love, I would love to work with everybody, with the councilwoman, all the four ward who we captain. Let's all sit down. Let's make it happen. And I'm gonna be very excited. And, you know, our Jamaican community, they've been in Patterson for many years, and it's, it's time to acknowledge with that street naming, the contribution that it be putting in our community, uh, in term of business and hardworking men and women that live in the city. So I'm looking forward to work, uh, on that. And also, um, through the chair to Madam BA, uh, I know Councilman Jackson mentioned, uh, Madison and Third Avenue, the property, uh, located. I remember that, um, there was a contractor that was supposed to clean the contamination of the property. The administration paid that contractor, and they never did the job. I need a full report on what's going on with Madison and Third Avenue. Uh, that's very concerning to me, and if you have any information that you could share with us now, if not, I look forward to hear that. As you know that, that piece of property, it will impact the entire community. So I need to know exactly, what is the plan that the administration has, and what are we planning to do? And if the property is still contaminated, based on what I hear.
Council President, if I could just address that, that, um, I know that is something that is coming before the Economic Development Committee, um, that the director has been working with the chairwoman on having that at an upcoming meeting.
Um, Council President, just quickly.
But, Madam BA, just.
Let's, let's end, so, let's, let's end the discussion on these two items, please, uh, and then we could continue with the agenda. We have a nine o'clock special meeting. So, go ahead, Councilman Mendez.
No, just in closing, Madam BA, just a request about the piece of the, what happened, because what I hear is that the property is still contaminated. Based on the, not, you know, putting the, the plan aside, I need to know exactly what happened with that.
Right. But it has gone through the, the process that we needed it to go through is something called the LSRP process, and that has happened. And so that's part of the report that the administration would like to share with the council, um, beginning with the Economic Development Committee. So that, we're, we're at the point where we are ready to go to auction.
And, and just.
Councilman Mendez. Just quickly, um, Councilman Mendez, we had a, a Economic Development Committee meeting, so that was already discussed in, um, in our committee meeting, and it's coming before finance. So, it should be in our finance committee, and you'll get some more, um, answers. But it should be coming before the council after that, on the April twentieth meeting.
So, so we're gonna, we're gonna pull those two items. I just want to say one thing, though, like, everyone, everyone watches us at this meeting. We need, we need to step up our game and, and start, you know, handling, we're all adults here, but this has to be, you know, a more professional environment, you know. I can't tell you what to do, what time to show up. Today, we, we started a meeting twenty minutes late. Um, we have an obligation to the public. Um, you know, I hope that we don't have to take actions like, like the one that was taken on this meeting, because look, look at, look what time it is already. It's eight fifteen. Public usually speak at eight. Sometimes we go over, that's fine. We have a meeting at nine. We still haven't touched the actual agenda that we were supposed to discuss, because we, you know, had these two items to discuss. Yes, they're important, but, you know, we need, we need better communication. Now, the, the item, we, we discussed one item on the agenda, then we took this, this two items. Um, but I just hope that my colleagues don't, don't feel that we have to go this route to getting things accomplished. If, if we cannot communicate amongst ourselves, how do we anticipate to communicate with the administration at all? And when I mean the administration, I don't mean the mayor. Pick one person that you get along with in, in the administration, but the work of the people need to get done, and we don't have to, you know, go this route, and, and basically throw the whole meeting, um, off track. Uh, Ma- Madam Clerk, you know what? Let's not prolong this. Let's have the public portion, please. We usually have it around eight.
Around eight, yes.
Council President.
We have three speakers, Council. But before we go, Council President.
Let me add that.
Yeah, I want to add.
Council President, item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one. What's the decision on item twenty-one?
Is it regular?
Is it off as well?
No, no, we're gonna, we, we're gonna go with the recommendation from the administration, which is to renew, and the recommendation from the, the DPW, uh, Chair, which is to renew. And we're gonna take a vote on it. So that's, it goes on regular.
Regular.
Yes.
Both of them are regular?
Which both?
Twenty-one and twenty-two?
Council President, there's a few items that I'd like.
Yes, they go on regular, twenty-one and twenty-two.
Okay.
Twenty-one, okay.
Council, Council President, I think twenty-one is, we're just pulling that from, because we're not gonna be soliciting bids then.
Yeah, we're not doing both. So it's either or. So we're only doing twenty-one on regular. Twenty-one is to solicit bids, so that one we don't, we remove.
And twenty-two is actually, I think, a separate, um, item, if the director wants. That's just the cardboard and commingled materials. We will come forward with the option year extension. Um, if you want, we can do that for this, this next meeting. So on the thirteenth, it can be on, and we'll, we'll just confirm that. I think Harry has that ready.
So number twenty-one is gonna change the language from bid to renew the contract.
Yeah.
The one-year option.
Right.
Twenty-two is off?
Twenty-two, no, no, twenty-two is regular. That's a whole separate item.
Okay.
Council President.
Councilwoman Dabila.
Um, I know that you're gonna open up the public portion, but, um, I have, uh, some major concerns with items ten, eleven, twelve.
Can you speak into the mic, please? Speak into the mic.
I said I have major concerns with ten, eleven, and twelve, so I'd like to remove them from the, um, agenda.
Well, before removing them, you gotta, you know, state your reasons to the council. Now, you don't have to give the detail, but.
So, so, um, I really, and I, and I think this, probably this question would, I would pose it to Corporation Council.
Councilwoman.
To, that there's some issues, uh, major issues.
Councilwoman, can I ask a question before you go there?
Sure.
Madam Clerk, is there an urgency to those items that we just stated? Is it ten, eleven, and twelve?
Yeah, that's our authority.
Do they have, no, 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 no. What I'm saying is, if, I understand it's our authority, but even making the decision, I know, I, I need to have all the facts even to remove an item. Um, did their entertainment license expire?
Um, that's a question for the finance director. He could better answer that for me.
So I wasn't done, Council President?
No, I know, but I just, I just want to have to add that question.
I was addressing Corporation Council, because there is some serious matters here. You and I have had plenty of discussions and an ordinance that we started with, uh, our previous Corporation Council, uh, taking action with some of these businesses, okay, that have not been friendly neighbors, okay, and that have, uh, throughout this pandemic have shown, okay, that they have been a, a nuisance. Uh, they have caused issues. There's been arrests. There's a lot of other things. So, I don't want to discuss something that is in the process right now through the state ABC. Um, I, I have, I have a lot of concerns, and I'd like, as Councilwoman at large, when these issues are, that come before me, and we get the complaints, and I get the phone calls at two or three o'clock, when businesses should have been closed throughout this pandemic, at ten, some of them at, at mid, at midnight, you know, it's major concerns. Um, there's more to it. Uh, Madam BA, I brought it up to your attention a few minutes ago, um, and I'd like them removed. We don't have to discuss them right now. There's no need to, because there's a lot of other issues that I can bring before you that you could see on black and white.
So, Council colleagues.
I don't know if the owners are here. Did the owners?
Council col, Council colleagues. So you, we have a councilperson requesting to remove ten, eleven, and twelve. We're gonna remove them.
Yes.
Well, what about the Council of the Ward?
I'm, I'm waiting for my turn to speak, because one of the.
Councilman Mendez, I didn't know you requested, but go ahead.
Sure. One, one of the businesses in the third ward, and I know, Councilwoman, that you, you have some information that I don't have.
That I want to share.
So, um, so we definitely could remove it, but moving forward in the future, any renovation, uh, definitely we should, the owner should be present. We need to hear from the owner moving forward in the future, when we're renewing those licenses, to get, you know, uh, that commitment from the owner that things will change, you know, in case, you know, those problems appear. So, I'll be, I'll look forward to hear from you.
We'll, we'll, we'll remove it, but for years, I've, I've always said that we need to have a process in place. We can't just go based on, "Oh, I got this information", and, and I'm not saying that you're wrong, Councilwoman, but there's gotta be a process in place, uh, that everyone, the same questions are asked of everyone. Um, and, and that's all I, I have to say.
And, Council President, I know some of the items that the Councilwoman addressed to me.
The, the, I'm sorry, Council, the owner's here.
Who's the owner?
We're not.
Well, we're not discussing it, so.
We're not, we're not. She requested for it to be removed, and, uh, we're removing it.
I, I just wanted to share that some of the information that the Councilwoman's referring to is in your DocuWare backup for this, so at least everyone can view it, um, for the items ten, eleven, and twelve. Um, twelve is the same as item eleven. It's the same owner, so you can view some of the, the concerns that are listed there, um, and provided to that, that information.
Um, Council President.
Yes, Councilman Mendez.
I mean, this is a workshop, and, once again, Councilwoman, I understand that you have some information, but we got the owner present here. I don't know if, uh, the legality of the information that you have, I don't know if we could speak about that to the Chair, to Madam BA. But definitely, when I see that the owner of a business is here, and we have a discussion of his business, I believe that he should have the right to be on the mic and.
But we're not.
Get any question. But like I said, Council President, moving forward in the future, you say that there's a process. So, when we have something on the agenda, let's find a way to, if we got the owner, we need to have a conversation. So we're gonna remove it, but at the next meeting, we need the owner present, and he's here. It's unfortunately that we're not, not gonna be able to talk about it, and I would respect that, to hear the information that the Councilwoman has, so there's a process in place.
So let me, let me ask a question of the Councilwoman, and, and, and we're gonna continue with having the public speak. We're not gonna speak on these items. Uh, that's why they didn't want to talk about any items. When I called for the, you know, for the public to speak, they could have been removed later. But if we don't speak on, on these items, Councilwoman, Mr. Bushy, I just want to ask the Councilwoman, if we don't, if we don't, i- is there more information that you need, that's why you want to remove it? Because this is a workshop, if.
Yes.
Okay, so she needs more information. All right. So, we're gonna remove ten, eleven, and twelve, but I agree with Councilman Mendez, uh, that information should have been provided then, whenever she needed. That information should have been requested before the meeting. Um, I don't know when was, this was, uh, this was sent over the weekend to us. Uh, so that information should have been requested and provided before today's meeting. That way we don't affect the business owners and, and, you know. I don't think it's fair at all, but.
No, it's not.
Let's continue. We're gonna re- remove ten, eleven, and twelve, and we're gonna have the public portion right now, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Council President, we have three speakers for the public portion.
First speaker, Madam Clerk.
First speaker is Kimisha Rogers Jones.
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Kimisha. I'm a resident of the first ward. I'm here today to just speak on some quality of life issues that we're facing in our ward. And I really wanted to address the council as a whole. Um, you know, we have reached out to, um, our councilmen, you know, on many occasions. Um, but as a resident, I'm coming to speak personally. I feel like our ward is being ignored, and that the quality of life issues that we are requesting to be taken care of are not being taken care of. And so I'm really want to implore you to make the, our quality of life issues a priority, um, just like renaming the streets, just like beautifying the parks. We have a lot of quality of life issues, like trash, like dumping. I don't know if you guys are a. I don't know if you guys are aware, we have taped many, I'm sorry, oh, we have uploaded many videos, taken many pictures. There is a empty, well, not empty, but there is a tractor trailer compartment on the corner of East Holesman Street that has been continuously filled with dumping material. This is just one of many things. This is, we've gotten videos from photographer G. Greer. I'm a representative of Patterson First Ward Wins community organization, and I just really, you know, I'm looking at an article where we're saying that we're going to break ground on Hinchcliffe Stadium, and I don't know if you guys are aware that right there by Hinchcliffe Stadium, there is a known dumping area. And we're beautifying certain areas of Patterson for tourists to enjoy, and have a great experience within Patterson, but residents aren't having that same experience. I live here, I work here, I worship here, I spend money here, and I'm trying to figure out why my experience is not as important as someone coming from Ridgewood, as someone coming to visit the Great Falls from Bergen County. I live here, and it's not like these things are not being put out in front of you. I mean, I don't know how many pictures we have to post, how many emails we have to send, how many videos we have to post, but the issues, and I'm speaking personally about the first ward because I live there, but I'm speaking as a resident of Patterson, that our quality of life has really diminished over the years. I'm forty-five years old, I've lived here all my life, and I'm seeing the parks being redone, but I can't walk my knees, my Goddaughter, to the park because the streets are littered with loiterers, with addicts, with trash. It's a beautiful, beautiful parks coming up that are being redone, but we can't even walk to the park. My church is on Holesman Street. I know Mike Jackson talked about a property across the street from Jean's Liquor Store that, I've lived over there. That property's been like that for years. But I also want to address the loitering in Jean's Liquor Store, around Jean's Liquor Store. Like, those are quality of life issues that need to be taken care of, and we need, I really want to implore you to make that a priority, that our quality of life needs to be improved and made a priority within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Mr. Miguel Garcia.
Not here. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker, Mr. President, is Mr. Errol Kerr.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening to the council, Madam Clerk. I'm here this evening to address the issue of the Jamaican Organization of New Jersey application for street renaming on Tenth Avenue. I must honestly say this evening, I'm a little bit disturbed in my spirit processing some of the conversation that I'm hearing coming from members of the council, when indeed they know, and I'm gonna run down some dates, they know that these arguments does not represent the facts of the case. The Jamaican Organization of New Jersey submitted on July 3rd, 2019, its application for the street renaming, and with our application, we submitted five hundred petitioners with that application. And let me just say to Councilwoman Cotton, the very day it was submitted, I got a call from you, and we start arguing about it. You claim you did not know about how it happened in your ward the very day, and I've been talking to you ever since that day, ever since that day. Your late husband, your late husband, Edward Cotton, is one of the persons who signed that petition, all right? He is one of the persons who signed the petition. Every business on Tenth Avenue in that area signed the petition. The people of Patterson, over five hundred, signed the petition. Anyway, we submitted it on July the 3rd to President, to the Clerk's office because we wanted to go straight through the process. We did not give it to a councilperson, so we went straight through the Clerk's office. It was submitted with a cover letter to the President of the Council at the time, Ms. Maritza Devil. We did not get back a formal response from our office, so we followed up on January 3rd with another letter asking, you know, we made the application, what was going on? And we also followed it up with a letter to the street naming chair, Councilman Khalid. We still did not get a formal response, but I believe I had some conversation with Councilwoman Davila concerning, concerning it. Okay, and August 10th, I sent a letter to President, President of the Council, Councilman Rivera. I got no response, official response from him. So I text him on October 8th regarding our application. His response to me was that, hey, I'm getting some pushback from the council. And I did ask him, what kind of pushback were you getting? But he never explained quite as to the kind of pushback that he was getting. On December 10th, I text him again regarding the petition. I did not receive any response from him from my latest text. The point I want to make here is that this is a city, and we all are in the inhabitants of the city. You have ethnic, various ethnic groups, and we coexist. If you go downtown, you will see a place there representing the Puerto Rican group, the Dominican group. You go up somewhere up in the second ward, you'll see somewhere representing the Dominican group. The Jamaican group been here from the sixties. We were here before the Dominican group. We were here before the Bengalis. We don't begrudge them of that, but we ask if that's the thing, where is the equity in this game for everybody? Why are we being victimized? We're not pushing back anymore, but we just need to ask the question, why are we not treated like everybody else? So I want to thank you, Councilman Michael Jackson, because you were the only councilperson that was receptive to our appeal. I'm asking the council, yes, there were information that we did not know. I'm surprised this evening, I'm still processing the information I got.
Can you wrap it up, Mr. Kerr?
Yes, yes, but let me just...
I gave you ample time already.
Thank you, thank you. I am thank you for your indulgence, I truly do. But this been going on for a long time, and I've worked with most of, all of you up there in some capacity. We have worked together. I work with some more than others. I respect everybody. I'm not the kind of person to attack anybody in person. So I am just asking that if there is a reason why we cannot get the street renamed, let us know. Let us know why, why everybody's here and we can't, and we can work with that. Thank you for your indulgence, sir.
We have no more speaker, correct?
Move to close.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call to close the public portion. Councilman Abdulaziz.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. To the speaker that came up to speak about the street naming, and I'm gonna speak because I am the Chair. I, as the Chair of the Committee, have received the formal request on March 11th. I can only speak about myself as the Chair of the Committee. I received that request on March 11th. We will be addressing this on Thursday. So I don't know why you waited two years, it's gonna go, and I want to speak to all the residents. Everything that gets proposed to us as a council doesn't mean we're gonna approve anything. I've gotten requests for street naming that I say, absolutely not. You don't, I'm not gonna put my name on it, but what I will guarantee you is after we meet on Thursday, there's two options. It could be released from committee and go for the process that should have been done and respecting the council, not this process that we wasted much time, but I just want to put the facts. As Chair of this Committee for the past year, from July 1st of 2020 to today, on March 11th, it was a formal request, and it has a meeting on Thursday to discuss. That doesn't mean I'll come out of committee, I may come out of committee, but I'll tell you is, call me after Thursday, I'll let you have the meeting, no, goes, and I'll let you the consensus, and I will also do that to the person that sent me the formal request. That's the way I run my committees. The person that formally requests it, I'll explain to them what happened at the committee, and even, technically, the protocol should be, the person that requested it should go back to you and say, this is what happened at the committee. That's the way a governing body and a functioning council should work with the protocols and procedures we have in place. So that's the facts. March 11th, I have the email, was responded back, and it has a meeting for this Thursday, April 8th, less than a month, including a week that was observed for religious reasons for many of the council colleagues. So less than three weeks, has a meeting to discuss through the protocol and process of the council that's put place in the ordinance. My vote is yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to say that I was not the first one, I was not the second one, I was more like the third one to understand, to understand what was going on, and, you know, to me, and I said it already, we don't have a problem with naming Jamaica Way. We don't have a problem. I lived in that area thirty-seven years. You said, I know they've been there since the sixties. You know, we don't have a problem. I said, but to me, I would say that the community of the area too needs to have a say in it somewhat. That's all I'm, that's all I'm requesting, that they need to have some say in it. So be fair about it, you know, you know who to put the blame on, but you don't want to put the blame on them. So come on now, don't, don't put the blame on Ruby Cotton, because Ruby Cotton is not the blame. This is my area. Be fair to me. How you, don't, don't leave me out the loop, period. Just leave me in the loop.
That's right, Councilwoman.
I love this area. I love these people. I love it all. Don't make it seem like Ruby Cotton dislike Jamaica, because that's not true. Living that area for all these years, so like I said, we can make it happen, it can happen. You want to work with all of us to make it happen, we can make it happen, because it is gonna happen. And that's all I gotta say, that it is gonna happen. And I offer you my aides to help you with do some of the legwork that gotta be done, because there's legwork to me for certain things, but it's gonna happen. Whether you like me any more or not, it's, it's fine, but it's gonna happen. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
So I was the Council President on July 1st, 2019, when the gentleman, Mr. Carr, came and spoke. I am speaking to the mic.
Yeah, you gotta get louder.
And handed the information, you know, to our Clerk's office. I stand with what I said, that there is no one in, on this council, my belief, in any shape, way, or form, is trying to not support the Jamaican community. That's not what happened here. So let it be clear, the sitting councilman, and I say this because we give respect, each one of us here comes from a certain area. I'm born and raised here. I'm gonna be fifty this year, here in Patterson, but I had a Puerto Rican mother and I had a Peruvian father. So whenever, so I'm half Puerto Rican and half Peruvian. So whenever there's any functions, it's the respect you give the sitting person, the Dominican councilman, the African American young ladies, you know, the Haitian person, the Bengali person, the Palestinian, that's what we do. So when we talk about the third ward councilman, he is of Jamaican descent. And so when he said, let's hold on, there was some stuff happening in 2019, which I don't want to revive here today, but there was a lot going on, and we felt at the time that we needed to stop. I said, street naming is right now, when there's all these killings and all these things going on, okay, and here, hence now comes 2020. So I just want to put it on record, as the Council President, this wasn't ignored. I gave the respect to the third ward councilman, he was the Jamaican councilman, okay, and we had the discussion, he had concerns, and then I had another concern. The fourth ward councilwoman needed to be involved. That's how we do it. And let it be told to everyone here, there are three council people at large here. So when I hear my colleagues say, my ward, my ward, okay, all six wards are handled by three individuals, and then you have one rep for each one. So with that said, I love my city, all its wards, and I'm going to fight and defend each and every one of our constituency. So with that said, Madam Clerk, my apologies for extending myself, Council President. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I take pride in the struggle and the fight that is taking place in this country. I take pride when I, when I hear stories about, just today, my son, who's an active activist, showed me a post of, the gentleman's name escapes me, but he was a black landowner in the early 1900s. He owned four hundred and ten acres, and he was so prideful that he rode into town to sell a product, and they attempted to undercut his price. And he said, give me back my damn product. I'm not gonna let you take advantage of me that way. He was arrested for cursing at somebody who was not of the same color. He was burnt, he was hung, he was shot over two hundred times, he was castrated. So when I talk about watching and being a part of fair and equitable treatment, I pass that same support along. When the Bangladesh community came before us, before a prayer that they was looking to push and support, I was looking to support that, because I don't want to see anyone discriminated against the way black people have been discriminated against in this country for four hundred years. So every group, as the gentleman says, has an opportunity to have a fair and equitable opportunity to have their state put in place. I didn't put this measure on here to be voted on or pushed forward. As I said, I felt the Chair was not giving it the attention it deserved, so I exercised my ability to put something on the workshop agenda. Now, how this has turned into all of these other things, I don't do street namings. You can't find a street naming outside of the ambassadors, which is the same one, but my father was a part of an organization that since Vera Ames was here, when the residents came to me and asked for me to push it forward, I exercised and worked on behalf of the residents. Street namings do not belong to a councilperson or a councilperson of that descent, a councilperson of that background. That's not how this thing works. We're supposed to be here to answer the questions of the community. And granted, I don't normally take part in street namings. I don't, it's not my thing. I don't do citations, I don't do photo ops, I don't do running to the microphone and say, oh, I want my name on that legislation. I don't do that. But when I have a resident that comes to me and says, listen, I, yes, I will, as I normally do, fight for their fair and equitable right. That's all it is, simple as that. If the gentleman is questioning, is being answered, he just showed you, he had a long period of time in which he was not being answered. I support every, even when it was a Mexican organization, I supported that as well. So I definitely feel as if the members in our community need to have a fair and equitable opportunity to be fairly represented across the board, because there were people who died for the right for them to do... because there were people who died for the right for them to do so. And that's just it, so, yeah, if anyone wants to take it personally, or you need, I don't, it's, it's not my item, not selling it, but anyway, my vote is yes.
Councilmember, we have a special meeting at nine, uh, let's try to stick to the two minutes, please. Two minutes, please.
Thank you. Councilman Mendez?
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk, uh, let me, let me try to stay in my two minutes with this, but just, um, uh, I hear the last speaker, and when he say that, Councilman Jackson, with all due respect to my body, you know, and when he said that he was the only one open and respected to work, that's a lie. And I feel that he's coming in front of this council and to respect this governing body. He never called me, and I'm the councilman of the Third Ward. Now, I'm being, I'm excited since I was elected, since I've been elected to represent my Jamaican brothers and sisters with pride, and I'm always telling them, I'm a phone call away. The only reason why we don't have a street in the city of Patterson with the name of our Jamaican brothers and sister is because of the previous councilman that was here. He failed to represent his own community. He put it on hold, no, just put, just put it on the side for now, he never revisited. He didn't care, he failed to represent his own community for the last twenty years. And I want people to listen to that, I want people to understand that, simple as that. Street naming is beautiful, I'm in full support of all the community, and I will show them how we got it done. I'm looking forward to sit down with the councilwoman, with Councilman Jackson, and I want my name in there, because I know how hard the Jamaican community has been working in this city for many years. Business owners, homeowners, hardworking people, and they deserve to be represented. And like I say, I'm excited to do that every single day, serving them, making sure that I take care of their property that they need. And the previous councilman, he failed to represent his own community for twenty years. We'll get it done, and we'll make that happen. So I'm looking forward to work on that and do it right. We're gonna revisit the location if there's a problem. The signature, we're gonna revisit if there's a problem, because obviously, if there is a problem, most of the signatures, they're not from people that live in that section, you don't do that like that. So we're gonna fix it, and you will see how we're gonna get it done, maybe by the summer, we'll have that name on, in honor of the Jamaican community. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mims?
Wow. So I'm gonna do a Maxine Waters, I'm gonna reclaim some time, since there was a lot of discussion. But first and foremost, I want to thank our First Ward, uh, I call her a team captain, coming out, out tonight and talking about the concerns in the First Ward. So, uh, my prayer is to our BA, with all of the, uh, concerns that she has outlined, that we would take a look on the corner of East Holesman and different areas in the First Ward, to ensure that there's a quality of life. A lot of times, the community, when these things are mentioned, they think that it's the function of the council, but it's the purview of the administration. So I just want to make sure to the administration, um, that this is done. Uh, and then we had a very robust discussion in regarding to the street naming, and Councilman Jackson, I have to remind you that you did the Tyrone's Colin, Nazira Bug, you were part of that. You were a part of that.
That was the families, I, I basically support.
Yeah, you supported, I mean, you supported. Um, but with, nevertheless, a, as it relates to this item, I wanted to be clear, um, I don't think it's the purview of anyone on the council to say that we have an issue with any particular area of community. At that time on the council, um, and I want to state the facts. First of all, there's been three different street naming committees. We had one in 2019 for the whole year, and then in 2020, we had a street naming committee for a half of a year, and then we had another committee, which just got done, so there was three different committees in place, so even if it was submitted at one time, it had to cross over to three committees, and sometimes things get lost in translation for whatever reason. But I remember those discussions where it was tabled, and let me say to what the things I heard, because I live in that area, and I talked to the neighbors, and a lot of those neighbors were not in agreement with this item. And one of the concerns they had was there were various shootings going on simultaneously in that area, and they said they did not want their name in that area where there was a lot of bloodshed. So I want to put that on record, I'm not saying that those residents have changed their mind, that's something that you have to have a conversation with that area and talk to the residents in that particular community to identify, have they changed their mind. That is one of the reasons why it was tabled. I remember, because I went out, Councilwoman Cotton and I, that's why I said I have to stand with Councilwoman Cotton, because when it came and we saw the emails, this was in her ward. And so she went, and I said, Councilwoman Cotton, have the conversation with the residents. And she pulled that file, and I remember her calling me and, and going over that file, and we looked at those addresses, and a lot of those people don't even live in that neighborhood. So we have to make sure, and this is only because of the concerns, because sometimes that's not even how the process goes, but when you have residents that have concerns, or in the community where they're saying that's, they're concerned, they don't want that to be done because of the bloodshed and the shootings, we have to listen to the residents in that particular area. So, um, Councilman Abdallah Zeez has already stated that they will discuss it again, but that will be the recommendation, to have some conversations with those residents to see if they've changed their mind, because it's still a hotspot area. So we need to identify if that's where it needs to be done, or do you need to move it up a block or over a block? Those are conversations that be, can be had. But it's nothing, it's not personal, it's not that any council member is, is against, it was just, that happened back at that time, and then when it was re-presented, they were still concerned. So it's not that anyone has a, a particular issue with the ethnicity. We all sit here, even if we're ward council people or at large, we vote for every ward of the city. So it's not, we're voting for this ward because we like you better, no, we vote for everybody. So, um, Council President?
Can you please wrap it up?
Well, everyone else took like ten minutes, I'm trying to make up for my time, I'm reclaiming my time late Maxine Waters tonight.
This is why this council is what it is, continue, Council.
No, it's not, every, Council President, everyone else spoke, you did not interrupt them. I haven't really spoke all night, everyone had a full discussion. I am closing, I, I'm not one of the long-winded speakers on this council, Council President. Uh, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council President?
So, Mr. Kerr, you, you're right, I'm looking at the, no, you don't have to, I, I, you're one of the speakers, let me just make it clear. Most of the people in this city are like you, uh, Ms. Camisha, right? There's a lot of issues going on, quality of life and everything else. This city has been here for hundreds of years. When you, when you brought this information to me, all I could do is pass it forward, right? Um, we're in the middle of a pandemic, you said October, right? I'm not saying this is not important, Mr. Kerr, but I'm like Councilman Jackson, I'm not the one that's always naming streets, giving citations. I was elected to do a function, and we all do it differently. I'm not there on the camera, you hardly ever see me, that doesn't mean I'm not working. People have, the public has a perception that the people that are working are the ones taking pictures out there, going to ribbon cuttings. No, my work is with them, holding them accountable, try to talk to them, always questioning them, um, and they know, they know what I do, right, that, that's my job. Going back to Jamaica Way, I, I, I've always said that this city should reflect the people that live here. I have the conversation here, Mr. Kerr, you, you must have asked me, where's the status on October, and you could pull your phone also, October 8th, you asked me what the status. I believe I called you because the next text was not me to you, it was you sending a text to me, basically saying, thanks, Flavi, but I don't understand what kind of pushback, uh, there could be considering the green, you know, and you went on. I said, ask some of my colleagues, ask some of my colleagues that have, that have been on the council in the past. I'm not my other colleagues, I'm not gonna say who, you know, they already mentioned Council McCoy. I didn't want to do that when I spoke to you. I just said there was, there was some pushback, not now, when it was first presented. And on that note, just so you know, I'm always, and I mentioned this to Councilwoman Davila when it came to the business owners, something I didn't like back then, in the process of the street naming, is that you gotta ask the same questions for everyone, right? If the shooting is not an issue for someone else, for example, to name a, a street after another community, why should the shooting be an issue when it's, when, when we're naming Jamaica Way? So I always had an issue with everything, I, I, I want everyone to be treated the same, that's all I ask, here's a councilman, when, when dealing with approving things, right? Um, and I said this in the past, there was one time I was sitting where you're sitting, and you, we, you and I used to sit there all the time, and we were on the Board of Education, but I used to come to these meetings also. I noticed one time someone came to get an entertainment license, right? One person did not speak English and had a representative, you know, someone to translate. That person was questioned on their capability of running a business, I said, how is that relevant? But then another person that spoke the English, spoke the language, brought someone to speak on their behalf, and that was okay. So all I'm saying is, you have to have the same process. You cannot start asking, because you're naming a street Jamaica Way, you start asking, um, all these questions. For example, petitions, we don't ask for petitions in this process. So why is it that the petitions, all you did was trying to strengthen your case? Petitions are not necessary, it's no part of the process. Now, if you want to make it part of the process, then everyone gotta bring petitions, not just Jamaica Way. They have, that's what I just said, to strengthen their case, but it's not required. This is not a requirement that we ask for in our, um, committee meeting. So, Mr. Kerr, I've never been against, against naming anything, uh, uh, you know, in regards to any community, but I'm like Councilman Jackson, I'm not here to, to pose for the picture, I'm here about to, to try to get some of this quality of life issues. And it's been frustrating, ever since I've been councilperson, I thought allocating the funding for the administration to do their function and, and improve quality of life, I thought that would be sufficient, I thought that would suffice, right, because that's our job, to make sure that we approve the resources that they're presenting. They're saying, look, councilmembers, this is my plan to improve quality of life, to improve services, would you approve it? We have proved, we have approved every budget that have been presented to us. Now, the only thing we could do as councilmembers, when you bring complaints, we already have the laws in place, this city's been here for hundreds of years, Mr. Kerr, and, and not to be disrespectful, one more thing, we were in the middle of a pandemic, you, you text me on, on, on October, we were literally in the middle of a pandemic.
Just reminding you, Council President, you're well over two minutes.
Am I two minutes, hold on?
You're well, you're well over two minutes, bro.
Hold on, what's the time that I have in the clock?
You went over, so I stopped.
She stopped.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear, next time you let me know.
She saved you the embarrassment.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson, thank you. Um, but, um, I'll conclude with that arrow, um, this city's been here for hundreds of years. I don't see the, the emergency in the middle of a pandemic to name a street. The street naming committee have not met. I respect my council colleague Abdallah Zeez, he says he wants to entertain all this request at the same time. He's the Chair, that's how it gets done. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson.
The votes are seven eights, two absences, the public portion is here right closed.
I recommend next time, we put the mic around the clock so we could hear the beep, thank you. Well, we, we, we have a special meeting though, at nine o'clock. What's that? We have a special meeting at nine o'clock.
Council President?
Let's do payment of bills before the special meeting, super, payment of bills. Payment of bills. We had the meeting?
I'd like to make a motion for payment of bills in the amount of four million, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixteen cents. There are waste management payments in here, and there are no, uh, payments for the county or the school district.
Discussion.
You need a second.
Second?
I second it. Discussion, um, Councilman Mendez?
Thank you, um, Council President, and I, I just have one quick question to the Chair, to Madam BA. If you could look at the line item, the backward, the, um, the year-to-date overtime, if you look at it, we've been, uh, over the last year-to-date overtime, do we have any plan, are we watching the overtime, how do we handle this? Because if you look at the number, we are over best versus last year and all the different categories, so I'd like to just, if you could comment on that.
Yes, Council President, um,
Yes.
Yes, Councilman, we do, I think, I'm, in looking at this form here, and, and I know I also send the council a different type of form, um, this isn't showing necessarily the percent expended, um, you know, in, in the same format that we usually give. I think our challenge here is that when you're comparing it, I don't know exactly, this is just July, December at the bottom, um, if we're comparing the year-to-year versus the year-to-prior year, this is pre-COVID, not COVID, but we do, as a whole, we do have, um, a lot of approvals for overtime, and we are trying to manage overtime. It's, sometimes it's a very difficult task, especially with public safety. Our COVID overtime in particular, we have to backfill our officers, both our firefighters and police officers, in a way that you might not in your regular clerical positions. So we are incurring quite a bit of overtime for COVID sick, um, but it is something that we are managing on a regular basis. I would have to dig into the details a little bit of the year-to-year. Um, our regular budgeted overtime is generally on track, our COVID overtime is what throws things off.
You know, definitely look into that, because I know we, 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 we on the way to our public budget, and that's gonna affect, that those are taxpayer dollars that we have to look for, and if we getting into a overtime amount of money, that what I see here, the services should be improving. So, and that's exactly, that's not exactly what I see there. A, and I just remember, you know, when the mayor was a councilmember, he was on top of this, and pre-sided the previous administration, because all the money that is spent in overtime, and I hope that he get back on that and put his mind and his responsibility into look at the amount of money that we're spending in overtime.
So.
Thank you, Council President.
I, I have a question, you said COVID overtime, we don't have a COVID, a COVID budget right now, we don't have a grant, do we have a grant for COVID?
No, we're still, well, we're wrapping up some of our COVID from cares, but most of that could be submitted to FEMA, it's not necessarily a separate, um, a separate budget per se, but it's a FEMA grant which can be rolling grants.
See, but the problem with, the problem we're having though is that we cannot, we, we have to handle this, like, we don't have, right now, we don't have a grant for COVID. I know you could submit it to FEMA, but we have to be mindful of, of, of our resources.
Of course.
I did analyze the report that you're talking about, and I did question, I mean, I questioned you, I believe, and, and you recall, I said that DPW and the Police Department, they're already over, you know, they're projecting to be way over the overtime allocation for the year. So we have to, we have to stick to that, and, and to the CFO, if, if there's anything that you have to reclassify, actually, you, you don't have anything to reclassify, the grant ended December 31st, correct?
No, it was extended through June 30th.
Have you reclassified all your expenditures for COVID?
Not through this year, no.
So, so, so we have done January, February, March, and we have not reclassified anything yet?
No, not.
So we, we need to do this on a monthly basis, uh, Madam BA?
Right.
Because the problem, and I thought we would learn from the past, we had this conversation before, last year, hold on, last year, the fiscal year entered in July, and I think it was almost December that we were talking about, that we have not reclassified the expenses, expenses for the previous year, which you're supposed to do before the year end, so you could show your surplus and, and, and have a better, uh, financial situation. So, uh, this gotta do, be done monthly.
We had reclassified as of last year.
Yeah, that.
As of last year, we had reclassified, as of the year end. Now, this year, we haven't reclassified because we're not sure how we're gonna spend it yet, if we're gonna use it for OE or if we're actually gonna use it for.
No, but that's the problem, but see, but that's a big problem. When you're, when you're approving overtime, how could you say you don't know how you're gonna be using it, so how you approve something that you don't know, that you have?
No, but Council President, we do know that FEMA does approve overtime for pu, for public safety backfill.
How much have we gotten from FEMA since last year for COVID?
I understand that we haven't gotten it yet, but it is in the approval process, and the challenge that we're having is that it's also during the change of administrations in the federal government level. So they have told us to wait on some of these submissions. Now, we ask every week, we check in with our, our FEMA, our FEMA people, I think some of it has to do that they were figuring out, and that we still don't have the regulations and guidelines from Treasury on this additional allocation of money through the American Rescue Plan. So we're following this all closely. I think our, it's gonna be a matter of where it's gonna be reimbursed from, not if it's going to be reimbursed.
So the responsible thing is, you know, sit down, analyze your budget, and, and you, you need to budget for this, because you don't know if FEMA is gonna give it to you or not, I know, they, they might. And another thing, Councilman Jackson, in another meeting, brought up the situation where you had police officers still, you know, um, uh, defogging, or fogging the rooms? And last time, we had a personnel meeting, the same conversation came up, that they're still doing this.
I think the, the question was not, they have stopped, the directive to the Police Department was to stop the preventative defogging, which they were doing of their vehicles. What they are, what is covered by FEMA is that they can do it if there is a positive case. So there might be situations where in a facility, in a vehicle, but it's not just police, we have multiple people trained to do that. We have our DPW facility staff, we have our, some of our fire team, we have our police team. So it's, it's not, that used to be a much larger lift, but that is not what is happening anymore.
Madam BA, but, and I'm not gonna prolong the conversation, I'm gonna leave it just with this last comment. We need to get a handle, you, you know, the, the, the processes that you approve overtime, right? We need to have a handle on this, we have, we don't have an open checkbook, we have a budget that we must follow. And we have a problem following, you know, our limitations in the budget. So the process, you know, I'm just questioning the process.
I understand that, Councilman, but if you look at this list, you'll see that the majority of the, you know, at the top, our overtime is public safety, it's police, it's fire. It's what human resources is really actually health and human services, so that's vaccination site overtime. Those are really, and then some public works. The rest of it is very minor. We are being very aggressive with our overtime approvals.
Madam BA, let me explain something to you. If your overtime for your office is $20,000, let's just say, let's say 50. And the one for human services is 40, 40,000. But you have police that have 1.5. If you arrest all the departments, you're keeping down, but you're not keeping an eye on police and DPW, then we're not doing anything. Nothing is being accomplished, because you, for example...
Council President?
Javier, what is your budget for overtime in finance?
Very minimal, probably less than 20,000.
Less than 40,000, right? So if you spend 20,000 in the year, but then the police have 1.5 million for overtime, and they spent 2 million. Whatever you save in those little departments, you didn't save. The overall overtime is overspent for the whole city.
Council President, I would suggest that we are looking at that. And it's something that, some of that overtime is out of our control when police are responding to emergent situations and shootings and investigations. Other than that, their overtime is very limited. So I, and they can speak to that themselves. If, you know, it's something that they know, we've had multiple conversations, they need to send emails. We're trying here to manage that on behalf of the taxpayers.
We'll have a lengthy conversation in the next finance meeting. Please bring, Javier, bring a report, please, on a monthly basis, month by month. Councilman Jackson?
So, when you have one officer being paid in excess of $7,000 to $8,000 in a pay period just to walk around fogging a room, and then you turn around and do it and allow a member of DPW to do that task, but you pay him a fraction of that, you can't possibly make the excuse that the, we're absorbing so, these astronomical amounts of overtime due to responding to shootings. I mean, right now, as of the other day, as according to Channel 2 News, we're the highest number of daytime shootings in the state and just about in the country. But we're spending, but the city's still spending all this money on overtime for policing. And you have officers doing, Fox still doing it. Make the complaint. Now, I want to have an opportunity. I know I didn't put it on the agenda. But we need to address the situation with the habitual illegal activity happening with this council that's ultimately going to cause, I mean, with the administration, is going to ultimately cost the taxpayers more money. We talk about the illegal hires and the recent review of an employee that totally, totally spotlights racial discrimination.
Council President, this is personnel information and it's not appropriate.
I didn't name anybody's name. No, 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 no.
Let's stick to the bills. No, no, but we got to stick to, we got to discuss the...
It's a budgetary item, because when it's going to cost us money...
This is an overtime. We're discussing a bills list.
All right, so we'll address it in a moment. But we'll wait until the Corporation Council comes back in the room. When you continuously have, you got employee reviews that's happening, that's having racial implications the way they are, and the city's going to wind up paying the price for it, it's going to be, it's going to be a budgetary ramification. So it needs to be addressed. It needs to be addressed. Yet again, another employee's rights being overstated.
And not defending the Police Department, but we are, you know, sure staff. So that could justify the overtime, but we need to look at it, right, to make sure that that's the reason why. I think they only have 300 and something police officers. They have less than 400. Jersey City has, and Newark, they have like, is it like 1,000 police officers? How much does Newark have?
Yeah, I don't know exactly, but I think it's about double.
Yeah, it's about double what we have. We need to hire more police. That's what we need to do.
And the Police Department does a really good job of doing a breakdown of where their time, their overtime is spent. So I can provide you with one of those reports.
Yeah, that's what we asked for.
And it shows the different kind of units within and the overtime accrued.
All right, thank you. Any other questions pertaining to the bills list, council members? All right, roll call, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Council President. Roll call for payment of bills in the amount of $4 million?
Councilwoman Cotton?
You know what? I was looking at the second page here. I don't understand what, what this did. You took this page off. It was a mistake. This one had the sewer utilities P on there.
No, I think that was, the first page is $4,591. I think the page before was $4,503. There was a payroll missing.
I know. But what was this? This is $42 million. What was this? I don't know how this got attached to mine.
No, you have two pages, right?
No, I only have...
Councilmember, we have a meeting at 9 o'clock.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying. What was this one? That was the old page they said it was. Okay. So it's not on there, so I see it now. Yep.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Council President. Roll call for payment of bills in the amount of $4,824,322.16. Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As I've done for the past several years, any bills list that contains a payment to this garbage company or sanitation company, I cannot support until we get a better answer from the administration and from this company that's rendering horrendous services. There's no way I could support this bill list. My vote is no, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I've been very clear for the record once again, overtime is out of control. We don't have a open account, and we could spend money left and right, because at the end, the taxpayer, they're going to be the one paying for the bill. They're going to be the one getting hit with another tax increase. So this administration, they must pay attention to that. And I'm just going to repeat, and when the mayor was the councilman, he definitely, that was his talking point about the previous administration, how irresponsible they were with the overtime. Now what happened? He's not even looking into that. So I don't have that much faith into that, that it's going to change. But I will just looking at, continue looking at the overtime and what is the plan that they have to stop that train. My vote is no, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mims?
So, a lot of the payments that are, this payment bill, this bills list includes services that have already been rendered. One of the things that I am really grateful to see in this bills list, there is a program we have in the city with rental assistance. And some of our homeowners of buildings and properties, they have been without this rental assistance. And this bills list includes their payment. Many of them are in the Third Ward. I've been speaking to them, and I called each and every one of them today to let them know that tonight, we will be voting to ensure that they get paid. So with that being said, I know you're all watching. My vote is yes. You deserve to get paid for that rental assistance. Thank you to the governor for making sure this was in place and that we're allocating it through the City of Patterson. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council President?
So from time to time, I vote no on the bills list that have, you know, the overtime. But bills need to be paid. Right now, the vote is 2-2. And my vote is yes.
Thank you, Council President. The votes are three yeses, two nays, four absent. Payment of bill failed. Okay, we accept that. Let me rephrase that. Payment of bill is hereby accepted. Thank you. 3-2. Four absent.
We're going to have to open the, we're going to have to close this meeting, right?
Yes. We have to take a motion to go into executive session.
Move to close to go into executive session?
We have executive at the special meeting. Hold on a minute. Yeah, but we scheduled it for 9 o'clock. We can't, yes, we scheduled it for 9 o'clock, though. We have to do, again, the plan was, we could have moved the meeting along if we didn't discuss certain items. And not just that one, even the solid waste. But we have, we have a scheduled meeting when we advertise it for 9 o'clock, so we got to go into that meeting. No, you might, we might not need them. That's up to the administration to let them know if they need to remain here or not. It's not for me to tell them to stay or leave. So, Madam Clerk.
Okay. So roll call to close a public meeting and to go into executive session. Councilwoman Cotton? Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Mendez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
The votes are five yeses. The public, the municipal meeting is now closed, and we go into executive session.
So, members of the audience, you cannot be present for this meeting.